So sorry, first up is going to be citizens input for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone that would like to comment, please state your name and your municipality of residence. And either raise your hand or your electronic hand so I can recognize you. And I see. Whoops, whoops, and I see it looks like Kim Cook. Has her hand raised?
Yes, yes.
State your name, municipality.
Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay. We are from Center County.
Ferguson Township.
Ferguson Township. Yeah. Our names are Kim Cook and Peter Heaney. And we live at seventeen seventy-four Cambridge Drive. We would like to speak about the proposed installation of playground equipment near Yorkshire Circle in Homestead Park. We would first like to thank sent Reese Martin and David Provolka for providing us with the information regarding the project. Thank you very much. We would also like to thank Laura Domeni for meeting us at the park to show us the size of the installation and the location proposed. The current proposal for this installation is based on a master plan from two thousand and five, which incorrectly depicts the physical layout of this park in the vicinity of Yorkshire Circle. The discrepancy between the master plan and the actual park has required an alternative placement of this equipment. According to David Provolka, he has stated that the proposed equipment was moved more internal to the site. This changes the location from the master plan diminishing the land that is marked for free play by over sixteen hundred square feet, the size of a small house. We walk in this park daily. We and other residents of all ages use the free play area for games and activities such as flying kites, badminton, catch and frisbee. The other day I saw families set up a game of soccer for young children aged six to eight years. We would regret the loss of this open space by the installation of the proposed playground. And our neighbors agree. We have collected signatures from twenty-three residents in opposition to the installation from nearly every household adjacent to the park from the top of Yorkshire Circle to the end of the park on Cambridge Drive. We recognize that Ferguson Township made efforts to gauge the interest of the residents by a survey. We regret that we missed this postcard. We understand that of seventeen households polled, seven responded and four were in favor and three against. We would like to ask that the Ferguson Board of Supervisors take action to relocate this installation to near the south parking lot, close to the pre-existing playground and picnic area. Alternatively, we hope that this equipment can be accommodated by another park. We would also be grateful if you could notify the Parks and Rec Committee of our petition. Thank you for hearing our thoughts on this issue. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you very much.
You do have two in the room that would like to speak, I believe, at the appropriate time.
Sure, that'd be great. Thanks.
All right, so one moment while I am going to reorient the microphone so that folks can see. No, that's not, I'm actually going to do one. Okay, now if you might want to stand back from this mic a little bit, but you should be okay. Do you want to do a test just to make sure? Is everybody able to hear that?
I cannot.
Maybe talk a little louder. Is that anything?
I can, but it's a bit of a strain. Is anyone else having some? I mean, I know my hearing is not great, but it's also.
It's difficult.
That's okay, we got it. Just use this giant. Yeah, there you go. That's going right into the heavy. Sorry.
Thanks.
Great. Is this better?
It is, yes.
One of the people that signed the petition that Kim and Peter walked around the neighborhood. And I think when three times as many people respond in the rejecting the playground compared to the four that actually returned postcards saying they like the idea. I think it would be appropriate for you to listen to our voices. I went over to the park today and took a bunch of photos. And I noticed that on the cul-de-sac street, there is no handicap access there without going into someone's private driveway. The other thing I noted was the standing water that's a result of the recent rain. And this is a frequent problem in the upper part corner of the park there. There's also a couple of sinkholes. So this is not real stable ground. And then just below what I think is the proposed area is the area that doesn't get mowed. And this is a bed for ticks. So why would you invite children into this area in the first place? The other photograph that I took today is of a tree at the downhill end of that same path that has thorns on it. And I'm guessing it is the opposite of a thornless locust. This is a thorned locust. And these, this is, I mean, if you want to make the park better for families, address this tree. But we already have playground equipment. We do not need more. I propose that you put a park and playground equipment in one of the new developments where maybe they don't have anything like this yet, but we certainly don't need multiples and not so close to adjacent properties. Thank you.
Grab your name.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I don't know, Dave, is the.
Dave just reminded me. My name is Debbie Trudeau. I am a resident of Ferguson Township at seventeen fifty-five Cambridge Drive.
Thank you so much. And Dave, you said there was somebody else in.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Short. You've got your phone. Oh, okay.
Am I, am I okay to stand?
Yeah, you're good. You should be good right there.
You can't see your face, but you're.
Yeah, I gotta hang on. I gotta adjust for the.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
So I'm Tobin Short. I am at seventeen fifty-eight Cambridge Drive. And Peter and Kim know me and Debbie, well, all of us in Cambridge Drive know each other. I do think that it's. I've been to often on a number of land use hearings here and at the planning board and even at the Parks and Rec Board. And usually the complaint is, oh, I didn't know. And everybody always says, well, you're too late. You should have been here at such and such time. This one really did blindside me. I usually pay attention. It should have been a red flag to you when you sent out a survey and you only get seven responses that maybe you needed to follow up on that survey. A door-to-door survey based on the neighbors got a much better response and it's all very negative. So right away, that should tell you something. So I'm, I'm really upset with just that notice. There was no posting on the park itself. We're on that park all the time. It's, it's like, we love that park. And I'm just wondering, how many of the supervisors are, are you aware of Homestead Park? How many have actually been there and seen what we're talking about? Ms. Strickland, you're, you're awarded too. So you should, you should know Homestead, right? Anyway, it's hard for me to read the room here, but I'm assuming that. The, the idea being it's hard to talk about the placement of this without having the park in their head and knowing the park. It's a small park. It's a nice park. And carving it up into little special use spaces is not a good idea. I'm not opposed to the idea of expanding or improving the playground that exists. It just puzzles me, this location. And the fact that there was no chance for usually you have community input. We all go and we look at the plans and you have little chances to do that. I missed all of that. And I'm not someone who just sits with their head in the sand. So, okay, it can't be just me because you're hearing from a number of neighbors, including on the petition who all said, what? This is news to me. So you didn't do a good job on this one and getting community input. I don't think it's too late. I don't think you need to waste the equipment, throw it away. I think we should be able to maybe look at this and think of a better way to do this. The location just kind of puzzles me for all the reasons people have said. So beyond that, I'm hoping that maybe we can kind of reconvene and get Parks and Rec to get together with us and look at it a little more closely. And I appreciate that kind of maybe feedback from the board. And maybe an instruction of park erected before you get spend too much more money on installing this stuff. Let's take a look at it and maybe get the neighbors. I guarantee you, you got our attention now. I think we could probably all work something out. So thank you very much. Of course, I'm always looking up there. My camera's here.
You're good.
It's bad.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else? All right. So I think I'll just respond to a few things regarding this. In the center region, park, park and recreation can be a complicated animal. And somebody had mentioned park and rec. And typically when that's mentioned, that's referring to a regional entity. And just to be clear, that, that particular entity would only be involved as a stakeholder. Just like residents would be. Ferguson Township, you know, you're at the right meeting. Ferguson Township, the entity is the one that, that makes the investment in, in the capital investment in the parks. So just to clarify, in case anybody is thrown off about that with that rest at a reference. The timeline on this, yes, the board has already authorized the purchase of the equipment. So our next step would be to issue the contract for installation. We did that based on the Parks Committee recommendation, based on the survey information and based on the master plan. Typically, master plans, not land development plans, but master plans for parks are typically not. I'm not, I'm not, we don't want to say accurate. That was not as precise as a land development plan. So they would have amenities and areas, but maybe not exactly precisely exactly where they would be general areas. It's more general than a land development plan. So, you know, to us, it, it appears to be consistent with the master plan that yes, as one of the neighbors has mentioned, it's gone through, you know, public comment and so we were acting based on quite, quite a, quite a lot of information. So it's not that I wouldn't be. You know, if, you know, there's going to be a cost now, right, to try to change course if it's possible at all. So it's not that I wouldn't be at all willing to entertain that, but I think it's important to note that, you know, our decision-making on, based on, you know, that, that information, it's, it's, it's all consistent, right, with, with everything. All of the information is there saying that this was going to happen eventual, eventually. And typically at this point, there's, you know, we're happy that we've, you know, put this master plan into, into action that, that, that the folks have wanted. So it's a bit, it's a bit of a blip, different, very different this particular time in that respect. And we also got a little bit of feedback that there is at least one neighbor that's happy about the installation. So, you know, for that neighbor, they're then going to see this as a veer from the master, the master planning process. So. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm in a bit, I'm in a bit, we don't typically also really respond to public comment but, but because of the uniqueness of this timing and the one to try to, I kind of want to do. It, it, it's not great that we, that we are thinking we're doing a good thing and getting feedback that it's not a good thing. So I'm, I'm, I'm not really sure how to proceed. It seems like we shouldn't. But there's a cost. So I don't want to just make that decision. So. And I can't because it's a board decision. And there's costs that we would want to assess. So I don't know if any other board members want to make a brief comments right now. Or staff would want to make a comment. You certainly don't have to. I mean, I think if, in lieu of any other comments, I would probably say that we could, we could assess whether there's another opportunity, but I don't think that anybody wants to make any promises because it could be very costly and there may be other stakeholders that really do support this. So that would be how I would proceed from here in a non-action way. Just to get that background information and avoid any additional costs being incurred, if that would. Dave, I think you've unmuted to.
Sure. I mean, if you'd like, I could provide a little general context. Of course, I'm not opining on what the board should or shouldn't do based on the feedback you received. But I, I think there was some indication that or some concern about the level of public involvement or public notice that was provided in the process. We have heard from a couple of the adjoining property owners, Ms. Cook and the folks that are in the room with me here, that they didn't receive the survey. Unfortunately, it's hard for us to figure out exactly what went on there. We confirmed that the surveys were mailed, of course, and that they, that the names and addresses were on the list. I will say that, you know, we've done different things over the years in evaluating the location and placement of parks equipment. We're trying to improve on that. We've introduced the Parks and Recreation Committee, provided some of these survey measures, which really this is kind of unique in the sense that we, we often don't survey abutting property owners when considering recommendations for park improvements. So these are all things that we're trying to do better on. And of course, there's areas that we can improve as well. And I thank those that made comments tonight. It gives us some good feedback in the future and how we can proceed. This project, you may recall, and I believe the chair pointed out that it's awarded in kind of a two-step process. The acquisition of the equipment was one capital project, which was recently awarded. So that material has already been ordered. It's not yet been delivered. We haven't taken delivery yet, but it's already been processed and it's on route. Any kind of return of that equipment, you know, absent another location for it, would require that we pay a restocking fee. I don't know what that is. I haven't. Of course, I didn't know any of this was coming up, but I could do some legwork on that and see what it would cost for the township to return the equipment, if that were the direction the board wanted to go. Just a quick word on, on placement. The location of this, and I do have a concept plan I could share, but perhaps now is not the right time, was done for a couple of reasons, but largely was for accessibility. It's very difficult by the play equipment now to get the slope and the surface that we need in order to provide for ADA, Americans with Disability Act or ADA access. So that was one of the intents, the intent, some of the intentionality went behind the placement of it. We did, as I believe Ms. Cook pointed out, move the equipment a little more centrally to the park to avoid conflicts with some of the adjoining residential properties. We're also installing a native landscape area, wetland mix nearby with the intent of reducing some of that drainage and runoff. That's also part of this project. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces. We got a lot of good feedback. We are able to do whatever the board wants as far as following up on this or situating it wherever you think is appropriate. It can be hard to kind of identify just another location for it in another park because there are components that are, I mean, of course, it's ordered for a specific demographic. It's targeted for a specific area. It's not to say it can't be done, but it might be a little more challenging to find another park whose master plan identifies additional play equipment for that demographic and a site that might be accommodated by what's been ordered, but we can look into that. We did, as you suggest, as you pointed out, we got some feedback that was supportive of the proposed placement and play equipment. So, you know, that's perhaps a consideration that the board might have when evaluating options to move forward. So from a staff perspective, we're ready to look into alternatives or to proceed. I anticipate because of the contract being proposed to be for the installation, proposed to be awarded through state procurement consortium, that we'll be ready to have that contract for the board's consideration as early as December sixth or seventh. I can't remember whatever that first meeting in December is, that first Monday. So that's when I would expect it to come back in front of the board unless you directed staff to delay that or to pursue another route.
Steve. I guess so at this juncture, I'm going to have to again point out and it that we typically do not have deliberation on things that aren't on the agenda because it doesn't provide folks opportunity to comment. And also the board isn't necessarily prepared. Dave just did a great job being put on the spot. Thank you, Dave, for all of that helpful information. I guess I would ask, I would be curious what the Parks Committee thought of, if there was another location. I think that that could be a question that we're asked to them at no cost. And it seems like an easy question. But I have, I personally have no idea what that does then to costs and timing. So. Do you have any details on that, Dave, briefly?
Well, yeah, not, not really. I mean, it really just depends on the outcome. If we can find another place for it at Homestead Park that perhaps the concerns that we heard tonight would be addressed, then maybe it would be in the relatively easy bucket. But if it were a different, you know, sighting in a different park and it had, you know, any kinds of, of course, with accessibility in mind, we'd want to make sure that we could get the grade that we need, the access that we need, the ADA parking that we need and the other considerations, the surface material, et cetera. That could be a cost driver, but it's, it's hard to know without exploring some alternatives.
Okay, thanks, Dave. All right. So I want to wrap it up. Do, does the board feel okay with just asking the Parks Committee if they could look at other locations at their next scheduled meeting? And we can go, go from there because nothing else, as far as I understood what staff just said, there's, there's no other decision being made until December. There's no action that we can take that's going to change any trajectory right now until then. So and we don't have time to act tonight anyway. So how, how is it as a board asking the Parks Committee, asking staff to ask the Parks Committee if they can look if, to see if there's alternatives, an alternative path, if possible. There might be other options, but like on the fly or a half hour into the meeting, we haven't actually gotten to the first agenda item yet. So I strongly feel that we should try to pick a, a path of least resistance and best possible outcome. Okay, it's interesting. I'm using the blur and you cannot see some of my hand motions. So we'll see how that works tonight. Okay, Dave, how, it, how's that sound to you? In the interest of moving things along, just asking the Parks Committee to, to answer the question, would this be better fit in another park or this park in another place? And if so, what would, if there's any cost, what would it be? Generally, I know there's no getting, not going to be an exact number. Thank you.
Yeah, we absolutely, we could do that. We could, you know, have this on the, well, I don't, I'd look to sent trees to see if the Parks Committee is planning on meeting in November. I believe they may have canceled there.
Yeah, we canceled in October. We are still scheduled.
Okay, so we're scheduled to meet in November. We could do some preliminary legwork on some suggestions and, and see what they're able to, to turn back.
Fantastic, fantastic, fantastic. All right. Thank you much. All right. Any other citizens input? All right, seeing none. Let's move to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one Board of Supervisors regular meeting minutes, please.
This is Patty Somoov.
Thank you.
Please, the second.
Oh, you beat me. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. First special report of the evening is the State College Borough Water Authority, Mr. Ford Stryker. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. The, in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. There's not much going on in the Water Authority. Things are, are moving along. We've had a lot of rain lately, so the wells are high and there's, there's plenty of water. I did want to mention that I conveyed your request to them about the potential of reforesteding that parcel that they own near the Whitehall Road Park. The, the board passed it on to their committee that handles things like that. Unfortunately, the committee hasn't met yet, but they told me they're going to meet in November. So with some luck, I may have a response the next time I report.
Wonderful.
There's no news.
All right. Thanks much, Ford. Anyone have any questions, thoughts for Ford? All right. Looks like Ford's headed out. Thank you very much. Okay, I have yet again lost my agenda. It's going to be one of those nights. Here we are. Dave Provolka with our COVID nineteen local response report.
Thank you very much. There have been no operational changes in the township since my last update. The road crew is collecting leaves and started what will likely be their last round of brush collection for the twenty twenty-one year. They started today and all township staff are reporting to the office on at least a part-time assignment. Township's meeting space is currently unavailable for reservation by groups that are unaffiliated with the township or local government and will remain so until further notice. In-person meetings with staff are permitted, but they are by appointment only, as some continue to work partly remote. We continue to offer virtual meeting options for all members of the public to engage with staff. And staff in the public are required to be masked at all times when inside a township facility, regardless of vaccination status. Disposable masks are available in the lobby. In Center County, there are eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-four confirmed COVID nineteen cases in total and two hundred and forty-four deaths. There are eighty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-nine reported negative cases on the PA COVID nineteen dashboard in Center County as of today. Across the Commonwealth, number of reported cases has reached one million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty-one with thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-four deaths. Second, on vaccinations, Center County data shows that eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six residents have been fully vaccinated. It is up from eighty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-six reported on October eighteenth, so trending positively there. And another seven thousand and fifty-four have been partly covered. County's vaccination rate is fifty-six point six percent, having received full vaccinations and sixty-one point two percent, having received at least one dose. Six million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four Pennsylvanians are reported to have been fully vaccinated as of today. Next, again, as of today, Mount Nittany Medical Center reported thirty-eight COVID positive inpatients in their care, ranging in age from twenty-two to ninety-four. Twenty-six of the thirty-eight patients hospitalized with COVID nineteen at Mount Nittany are unvaccinated. And two patients are currently on a ventilator. There remain four primary variants of concern in the United States. All Ferguson Township residents are strongly encouraged to sign up to receive the COVID nineteen vaccination if they've not already done so. Recently, the Centers for Disease Control has recommended that moderately to severely immunocompromised individuals, as well as others that meet qualification criteria, receive a third dose or a booster dose of the vaccine. And anybody with questions on availability should contact Mount Nittany Medical Center for more information. On October twenty-ninth, the Food and Drug Administration authorized the use of Pfizer's COVID nineteen vaccine for children ages five to eleven. The authorization could make vaccinations available for twenty-eight million children in the United States. An administration of the vaccine could begin as early as this week, pending approval from the Centers for Disease Control. There have been no firm plans as of yet for vaccination clinics in this area since CDC approval is still pending. However, local agencies such as Center of Volunteers and Medicine have begun preparations for when final authorization is given. And more information will be available on our website. And more information will be available on our website as well as our social media when it's made public regarding the status of any upcoming clinics. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board or public and thank you all for your patience and understanding as we continue to recover from this crisis.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions?
Just very quickly, Dave, I wanted to note that the bulk waste pickup got rescheduled. And I want to say the date it was rescheduled for, but I'm afraid I'll misstate it if you have it right there.
Yep, good point. I can pull it up pretty quickly. And note that bulk waste has been rescheduled for the week of December 13th on your regular collection day. So December 13th to the 17th, whenever your regular trash collection is, that's when bulk waste will take place this year. Thank you. Good point.
Great, thank you. Great question, Lisa. Thank you, Dave. All right, moving on to unfinished business. First up, the 2022 Center Region Council of Government Summary Budget. This will be introduced by Dave Provoca, Township Manager.
Thank you. I will keep my comments very brief. There is a link provided to the 2022 COG summary budget in your agenda packet. The October meeting of the COG General Forum referred this item to the participating municipalities for consideration and questions. Comments are due back. I'm actually changing this narrative a little bit as we speak here to, I believe, the COG Executive Director by November 18th. We do have Eric Norenberg and Joe Vigilone, Center Region COG Executive Director and Finance Director here tonight for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Dave. Eric or Joe, would you care to add anything before we have some discussion?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just make a quick comment that this has been a long process as the COG budget process normally is that, you know, we began with the program plan development in the spring with the program plan being presented to the General Forum in July. Detailed budget was prepared and reviewed by the Finance Committee during a number of budget hearings in September and into early October. And the recommended initial detailed budget was reviewed, as it said, in, in great detail by the Finance Committee and several items were, were modified and adjusted and I think the, the end result is one that will be supportive and positive for the COG for the next year, but also one that had a lot of input and feedback and collaboration on the part of the Finance Committee. So I, I know that both you and Mr. Miller were at, I think, all of the meetings of the Finance Committee, so you're probably well aware of those changes and Joe and I would be happy to answer any questions that you or the board have about the proposed summary budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. And let me also add right now, I just am realizing I am getting very sick, so I am off right now. I have a fever and I'm not really on because I would have said welcome and thank you for being here. So let me say that now, welcome and thank you for being here and to anybody else I missed tonight, because I'm not quite on. Joe, did you want to add anything or did I already ask that? Okay, great. All right, looks like we're ready to have some discussion and the goal of this is to forward any comments to the COG, well, to the Executive Director to be, to be exact. Do we have, I have, I have some, but I'd like to open up the floor to any conversation. Or you know, I will, I will go ahead and make some comments to get us started. I'm not seeing any hands, so I, I will go ahead, so. So one thing, it's just like a general, very, some of them are very general. You, you, you probably, Eric, even being relatively new, probably already know my style is typically more of a, a general kind of comment than a very specific detail per se. But I guess this is actually a detail, but it's a general idea. Page four, it says CRPA. But through some of the rest of the document, we see CRPRA. And the reason I think it's important to be consistent is because they, the, of the R and the C budgets, they're different budgets, so. Sometimes I think we might be calling R budgets, C budgets in the index, but then it's correct in the, I think it's correct, although I might, I didn't actually check every detail, Joe, I just noticed that. So can we make that consistent? Is my question. Can we just make that consistent?
Now, Laura, I'm not, may not be on the same page as you, but CRPA can also reference a Center Region Planning Agency.
And I'm Oh, no, yeah. Page four, I did write the page numbers down. I have figured something out here. The page four is the CRPA, I believe that it was the parks. I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent sure, but having trouble multitasking tonight. Can you look at the index there and look at page four and it says CRPA, right?
You on page four, the summary budget, correct?
Yeah. Oh, that's, yes, it's the summary budget online, correct?
Okay, hold on one second. I'm in the detailed budget online and summary budget on paper.
Well, we got the summary budget link in the agenda. But I'm, we can, of course, make any kind of comments, I'm sure.
Right, I'm almost there, hold on.
And Dave's got it on the screen, Joe, so. I'm not seeing it either.
Dave has it on the screen, okay. I did finally find. Okay, there it is. It's under CRPR Parks, correct? So here, if, yep, I think the cursor just went over it. Yep, that's, so there it says CRPR. Then if you scroll to page nine, which I love this document because the pages in the PDF or the actually, correct, I think it's, yeah, one more, yep. So see over here, you've got CRPA, CR, I'm sorry, CRPRA. So the, the reason why, it seems like, why does that matter so much to her is because you guys know, because I know you all have been, we've all been engaged in this conversation a lot together about how CRPA is a different agency than CRPRA. The RA is the authority and the A is the agency with the COG. And in our, I know in our budget, like if you look at the headers, it's correct, so it says, I always get them confused. I think it's Milbrook Marshes in our budget. It says that properly in the header. But then in that index, and you might have done that for consistency, but it's actually not consistent then, right? I think the complexity, by masking that complexity, by simplifying in that manner, it doesn't allow other people to understand the complexity that exists there and then we can't evolve to a place where it's actually simple that we can properly represent it. Does that make sense?
Laura, yes, what I actually have here, and I understand where you are now, and we should make a change on the table of contents. We brought in the old table of contents from the previous summary budget, but we updated from the detailed budget the other one for the share on page nine. So now knowing that, that's just an inconsistency between the two and we'll make it consistent going forward.
And won't it be the case, though, that then, if we're, if you're, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, that within that index page, page four, each of those items underneath the parks is going to be a different acronym. One of two acronyms, either CRPR or CRPRA.
The first two will be CRPR, the last six will be CRPRA.
Thank you. You know, anybody that's listening to this that isn't involved in the governance question is like, wow, is this what government people talk about? Thank you, I appreciate that. That's really great. I appreciate that a lot. Okay. Okay, and then another question relates to, it's a bit complicated. The food truck discussion. The part that I'm thinking about is, yes, I did, I've attended. In fact, I've attended those budget meetings, I think, almost every year, each meeting, except for maybe one year. And I finally see like a lot more, you know, I understand a lot more. Okay, so the way I'm reading it, though, am I reading it correct? That in the food truck discussion, we talked about how that was going to come out of, if it were to be funded, the pools capital budget event, isn't that what we ended up on is the first question? And so that kind of, like when I was looking at the, the overall budget, looking at the revenue, it looks like the revenue from concessions goes into parks operating. But it might be the case that it's under pools operating under the, it has like Park Forest, Welsh, like I, I believe those would be pass revenue. It might be embedded in there and I just don't, I just don't know that, that level of detail is not in the summary, the summary budget. So the question to Joe is, is it correct that that food truck money was coming out of polls capital? And is it correct too that right now all concessions go, revenue goes into parks operating? Or did, did I miss some detail?
I can, I can answer that. The pool, the concessions vehicle has been pooled for a larger business plan and we will bring it forward again as it's a little further betted through there. So where it was initially proposed in R12, it is no longer in R12 and R12 is the pools capital budget.
Okay.
The concessions in C20, but there's, there is concessions revenue and expense in C20, but there's also some in aquatics. Aquatics had run some drink sales and some frozen popsicles and ice cream things that they do sell from the front desk at the pools. So there will be concession revenue and expense at the pools as well for whatever they sell at Park Forest and Welsh Pool. But that, that's only on drinks and popsicles and ice cream, I believe.
Okay. So right now, the concessions revenue from the pools is going into the pool, or I'm sorry. I, I keep saying pools, I should say aquatics. The, the aquatics concession revenue right now is going into the aquatics operational budget.
Correct.
Okay. Is that in the same line together with the, the passes and whatnot? The sales from passes and whatnot.
And that can be seen better in our detailed budget.
Yeah, okay.
It is, where you look at the revenue on the summary budget, it is done by pool. So we, we have total
Okay.
Forest, total Welsh pool, but underneath there, there's a subcategory for concessions, both at Park Forest and Welsh, which is concessions revenue.
Okay.
And that, there's a line item for season passes and for lessons and for daily passes as well.
Gotcha. So that food truck, if it is funded eventually, would then, that revenue would go into that if it were at a pool and it would go into like trying to think of the operational budget for the regional park, would the op, it would be the parks, park and recreation budget if it were revenue from the regional parks, that.
Well, if I could just jump in, I, I think one of the things we want to work on in developing the business plan are the broader accounting
Gotcha.
processes related to, should the concession operation be kind of a standalone? Or how should it be attributed to facilities? Those are some of the questions still to be worked out and so I don't want to speculate at this point.
Perfect. Well, then I will not waste any of our time then. I'm sorry that I may have, that's great. Okay, so those are the kinds of questions that are going to be answered. That's fantastic. So then I have another kind of general large question. And if it's too much for tonight, we can table it, but if it's a simple answer, that's also fantastic. I've been wondering about the COG formula. If it represents a per capita cost that's the same across municipalities. So for example, if Ferguson looked at how much it costs for fire program per capita, it would be the same as patent fire program per capita. Why did we choose, oh, Steve, you're smiling a little bit. Is this a business that I'm, I asked this question or?
Well, the, I was just gonna say the formula really isn't a per capita formula.
It's not, I know. That's my question. Why?
Anything that would, anything that's called formula is not for capita, just because there are other factors built into it, so. So if, if you're looking at per capita, that would be different from the COG formula.
Right, so my question is, does anybody, so like, if you're a resident, right? Like, here's what got me to thinking. Harris Township Supervisor up for election said, we get X amount of services for X hundred thousand dollars from COG and this is a great value to us. And so what you would be able to do is you would be able to divide their number of residents by the amount that they paid, right? So then I got to thinking, Harris Township pays X per capita for this service. Do we pay that same per capita per service? Because it's, see, it's the same service, so shouldn't it cost the same for each resident of the region? If we look at it from a regional perspective. So it doesn't have to get answered tonight, but this is the only time that we get to really talk about this kind of stuff, so. I know we can, kind of, does anybody have a short answer for that? Okay, that's what I figured. Okay, all right, so now it's on the table. We can all maybe think about it on our long drives, okay? Sessions. Oh, okay, then I just had one other question. This, this relates to a process, it's been going on a while. I'm pretty sure Joe's going to know what I mean when I start talking about the revenue. Okay, so I, you know, I'm in Public Safety Committee. When we, each month when we meet, we get reports of revenue and services by municipality, even though that's a regional service. So we'll see Ferguson Township had X amounts of permits and X amount of inspections, that kind of stuff. Harris, so on and so forth. Can we get more of that data for parks? And again, this isn't quite budget, but have we made any progress on that? Yet, that project that we've been working on. Does anybody here know of that? Because I know we've been talking about doing it a little bit in the parks governance, but it seems like we're already putting a lot of eggs in that basket and that that is going to be too much and it might be a finance, so where I'm going with that is I'm saying maybe you know, maybe we could ask Finance Committee, I, I'm not sure, because again, it's parks, right? It's like, it's the authority, it's not COG, but it's related to this.
Looking on the numbers within what I have, when you're getting those reports from code, that's about one point five million dollars. The parks total revenue outside of municipal contributions for parks operating is about three hundred thousand dollars. And that would be the only location that you would have revenue that you'd be looking for by municipality. We could check with Pam because I am unsure of whether or not the rec desk system does have it by municipality. But I have not been requested to track programming or reservations by municipality. And a GL, in the general electric code is not built to do so.
Okay, thank you. Would that be a budget comment or would that be something that the Finance Committee would talk about? Because I think that it would be, I think it would be helpful in our relationship because Because here's how I think of that number is we could work to together to grow that number. But if it's not a number that's visible to us and meaningful in a way that we can give to our parks committee. So they can utilize that data to make good investment, you know, like it's not, it's, it's not gonna, it's not going to grow if we don't plan that way. So if we, because we do the capital investments. So if we can start to, to get to that point, Joe, it was real helpful to know it's only $300,000. That's not a lot. I've been asking about benchmarks. I think that overall revenue for a parks department is supposed to be about the non-tax revenue is supposed to be about a quarter of their budget. So I don't think that quite is that ratio. So I was thinking about it as being maybe a more of a bigger piece of the pie, but it doesn't maybe mean that we should ignore it completely. Cause we can do things about that. We can put in pavilions, right? We can look at how to raise that revenue. So would you need some sort of an official comment? Or does the board understand kind of where I'm, I'm headed with that? Okay. And we're talking like you were here for that park amenity discussion we just had. You know, we're always trying to make good decisions with parking many, the more data, the better. So.
I think Joe and I can certainly look into giving you an answer about the what capabilities we, we can generate from rec desk and at least understand those capabilities. And certainly the software that code has been using for a long time has been generating that data. But as you know, that, that software application will be changing next year. But, but we can get that answer back to you and then.
Thank you.
Conversations.
Thank you so much. It would be really, really super helpful. And that's, that is all I, all I had. Does that inspire any conversation from anybody else? And if not, I think. Did we want to go through section by section? Because that was like my original intention, but it seems like, seems like we are already talking, I was the only one that had a whole lot to say, but I can certainly guide us through if we want to quickly run through Lisa.
The only comment I was going to make was I appreciated all the discussion around future planning and putting in known expenses that are going to be coming up in the next few years into the, into the program plan. So the municipalities can plan ahead and know what's coming up and that when new items are added in the annual budget, we can be prepared for that and not say, well, you know, was this planned for? Did you know about it? So I appreciated that conversation throughout. And I know even in my committee, we had that discussion. So I think that's a really, a really big step and an important one.
Oh, thanks so much for bringing that up, Lisa. That's such a good point. I'm, I do, I have, I have a list of things that could be considered that, you know, I can email, but it, I'll just, I, cause I don't want to read it all. You don't want, nobody wants me to read it all. But there's, you know, there's, there's 16 staff, there's multiple, maybe million dollar facilities. There's plan revisions, bike plan revision, affordable housing study. I'm not going to read them all, but there's a lot, right? There's a lot. Lisa, go ahead.
Yeah, that just makes me want to ask, are those items that you have listed that you're thinking about? Is that something, I guess I would ask Eric and Joe that as committee members, we should bring forward in those committees and ask those departments to be adding those things to their program plans? Is that how that would occur? Is that the best plan or what should we do about that?
Well, first, I guess it would be helpful to, if the chair could send us that list, then we could, over the next few weeks, Joe and I will be spending some time working on thinking about the budget planning process for the next year. There are a number of changes that have been suggested. We did ask the finance committee for feedback during the finance committee review process. So we're looking at the schedule and how we can make sure it provides timely and responsive budget production, but also is reasonable in terms of the burden on staff and the workload that happens throughout the year. So we'll be looking at that and then can advise the agency directors as they work with their particular committees in terms of gathering that information, Lisa. So hopefully we can factor that into the process. But that will be a conversation we'll be having with agency directors in the coming weeks.
Thanks, Eric, and thanks, Lisa, for remembering that and bringing that up. Looks like that, that sounds like it about does it for that conversation. And what looks like is going to be a recurring theme for this evening, I have yet again lost the window I am trying to be reading from. Here we go. Okay. So, I guess we could go ahead and entertain that motion. It does seem like staff is going to respond to that one item. We might as well validate their effort by making it a formal comment. Which is to take a look at the capability for the park and wrecked rec desk software to determine if revenue reports can be generated on a by municipality basis or and or what, what portion thereof can like if, you know, 80 20 rule, if some of it can, maybe, maybe that's the sum that we need to know. Other than that, I didn't hear any other comments. The adding to the CIP that Lisa brought up, we, I, did we make that a formal comment before? Actually, Dave, wasn't that one where I thought we had made that as a formal comment, but then we didn't? Maybe we should just do it now to make sure that we've got it in there. Let's just do that. Let's make sure that that's in there. Our other comment is, oh boy, I'm sorry, to evolve a mechanism to include items, staffing and items that are coming up in the CIP or are planned in a document. So when I say that to include like, for example, in the park and rec comp plan, we have staff planning in there's for 10 years. So the 16, that's for a 10 year chunk. So it's a general statement, you, I think, get the gist of it, but to have it, Dave, is that clear as mud for you to?
Yeah, I think I understand. So, so the request is really to just be able to better identify expenditures, large scale expenditures or recurring expenditures that are perhaps captured in some of these other guiding documents. So that the board and presumably general forum can better predict and adjust in advance for what these expenditures may.
I want to feel like, I feel like I want to bring up though, a big stumbling block that I can already see with that, which is the, I, I think it's a better is the enemy of the good kind of a thing. Like we shouldn't be striving for perfection in our numbers, but giving each other an idea of what the plans are. But that so far is like something that it's a difficult concept to work with, with a large group. So we may need to come up with a policy regarding that. I don't know what the approach would be, but I'm not trying to say that. I don't know. I think it needs some attention that the details, the devil is in the details there. But I think that it, we shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Like, we shouldn't just say, oh, we don't have an exact number, but we know we're going to do it next year. But we're not going to put it in the plan because we don't have an exact number. That kind of is a little bit, you know, like, isn't it better to have at least a line? I even put maybe a line with just the title in my spreadsheets, right? Just the name even in there with a question mark. And so like a place, yeah. Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, and I think it's important to identify the, the items that we anticipate are coming up for planning purposes. I've had bad experiences when a wrong estimate was projected because of, you know, some information that was, that was deemed accurate at the time or based on, oh, we, we know another project was about the same size and it was about this much money. And, and you know, I don't want to get help, you know, get everybody's hopes up for a number that won't be realistic. So I think we, we can work on that and come up with a procedure that everybody will feel comfortable with.
Thanks so much, Eric. Yes, we should have the asterisk of uncertainty, right? Think we know that we don't know what we don't know right there. Thank you so much. Okay. I think that's it then. Thank you so much for coming.
Laura, can I add just one more comment? One, one comment for our comment is to just call out staffing in that future planning. Because that was one particular thing we were hoping to get added to that.
That's a good point. It's a straightforward staffing. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. And then I would also add on the uncertainty of future planned expenses or known expenses. You know, maybe just a screenshot of what we have in our CIP at the very end, the very last page, wherever it is that just lists those items, items not included in the five year plan. There are no numbers attached, but it is big picture items that are going to come up. So that could give you an idea of what it was that was being brought up when, when there is no number attached to it yet. But we know they're going to come up, but they're too far in the future really to have, to have an expense, you know, being able to be predicted there. Other items that are within the five year plan, I think it's necessary that we have an idea. But those few that we wouldn't have an idea of the expense, they're just listed there. So I think just a visual example of that might be helpful.
Thanks so, so much. Thanks everyone for the great conversation and good luck getting through the rest of the budget season. And thank you so much for attending.
Thank you all. Bye bye.
All right. Next up, we have the Ferguson Township Parks Assessment Update. This is going to be introduced by Sentry Smart and Assistant Township Manager.
Hello and good evening. Thank you, Chair Danini, for that introduction. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. So for this evening's discussion, I prepared a brief presentation just going over some of the information. And I will share a screen. See, right? Can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation? Fantastic. Oh, wait. Can you still? Looks like we haven't, you can, can you see the full screen?
Uh, there's, I think it's, it's not full, full screen, but it's covering my whole screen. I don't know what to say.
Yeah, let me try that again. That was interesting. Uh, no. All right. Is it, are you seeing just the PowerPoint presentation or are you seeing it divided into?
We have presenter view. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry for the confusion there. It's on my end.
If you click on Sentry, that little, you see the icons underneath your presenter screen. There's one that looks like a little magnifying glass. Yeah. If you click that, wait, no, not that one. Go to the next one. No, try the second from the left.
Second from the left.
One more over. Yeah. What's that?
We all slides.
Perhaps not. Okay. I thought that might get you there.
Different than the last time I presented.
Go up to hide presenter view, click on that, try that, see where you're, no, you're right, you're right, right click, screen.
Right.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
That's what I want.
You gotta try. Yep.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all for appearing with me here as I.
Sentry's, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's, I feel like this is just the energy of this meeting. I am, I was reminded that I did not call for the vote on our last item. Woo, boy, this is, I've got a bit of a fever and this is what this does to me. I actually thought of maybe trying to spring it on Lisa to share the meeting, but I'm going to try to muddle through. I'm sorry for all of you. We'll see.
I have a question before we vote on it. Are we, I don't think we're supposed to accept or adopt the budget at this point, are we?
No, but we're supposed to send the comments.
Right.
We didn't.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move the way forward, the comment, update for the comments as.
You.
It's Patty. I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And you oppose same sign, motion passes unanimously. And back to Sentry's, let's have a Groundhog Day moment where you share a screen again.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So here we, oh, wait, nope, wrong screen. There we are. Okay. Can you all see the presentation view? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So I did prepare a presentation. I will just kind of introduce the item though, with a refresher. At the regular meeting on December 7th, 2020, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to research information and then report back to the board with information related to the township's participation in the Council of Government Center Region Parks and Recreation. So with that said, I'm going to go to the next slide. And so often times when the conversation gets mentioned or brought up in our meetings or in discussion, the question is why? Right? So why is Ferguson Township going through this exercise and conducting a park assessment? And in part, one of the major reasons we generally suggest that going back to the 2017 strategic plan ultimately guides and inform a lot of what staff is working on. As it was approved, this 2017 strategic plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors. And largely, I believe, some of the current board numbers participated in the exercise. So going back to goal one, the financial stability. B particularly reads regularly compare the cost of providing services in-house with the cost of providing, excuse me, cost from private contractors, other municipalities, other government agencies and cost of providing services regionally. Also goal nine partnerships and regional thinking, particularly provision C and D. They really do speak to part of why we're doing this park assessment and exercise, which C reads as increased financial stability through partnerships. And D says monitor partnerships to ensure they continue to be beneficial. So this park assessment has been prioritized as an actionable step to achieve goal one and goal nine in the Ferguson Township Strategic Plan. Throughout the year of 2021, we have had a few interdepartmental staff meetings to examine the resources that have been invested to conduct the existing services or excuse me, to provide the existing services and service levels to which are facilitated by Ferguson Township Administration Department, Public Works Department, as well as support and participation from the planning department. So here in this slide, I prepared a little bit of a visual just to try to visually demonstrate how the services are currently kind of categorized based on which, if it's Ferguson Township Administration Planning and Public Works, breaking out that currently there's policy development, there's operating budget and capital improvement plan budgeting done by Ferguson Township, as well as some, some of the social media and marketing. There's oftentimes that we need to get messages to Ferguson Township residents related to Dog Park, for example. And we'll send out a notification through constant contact. So not the social media and marketing in terms of programming, but certainly getting information out about our parks or notices to keep folks informed. Also contracted services, landscape plantings, Lomo and capital projects are also examples of active services and service activity levels that are facilitated through Ferguson Township. And then here, as you might be able to see, hopefully can see, I'm going to, there we go. Center Region Parks and Recreation, they facilitate the daily operations and maintenance, as well as the recreation operations programs and special events. And so I'm going to move into the next slide and break down a little bit more by providing more information on the services and some of the service activities facilitated by Ferguson Township Administration Program Survey Summary. So again, budget accountability facilitation of Parks and Recreation Committee. Also facilitated through administration is policy development contracted service. Also facilitated through administration is policy development, contracted services. An example of that would be Park Master Plans. Also, the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan Update is being facilitated through contracted services through the Administration Program. Unless, if there are any questions, I'm just going to keep moving through the slides and I'm happy to take questions as I'm presenting or at the end. Also, again, just to wrap up the last two service service examples, public input and communications, also something that we do in the administration with the support of our Communications Coordinator, as well as project management, really kind of facilitating communications between perhaps someone in Public Works and Center Region Parks and Recreation. So there's a great deal of strategic project teams being coordinated with communications to help identify project identification or facilitate the process to to resolve an issue or to address any capital projects that are in the pipeline and outlined in the CIP, for example.
Quick question.
Absolutely.
Thanks. And I don't want to hold you up too much, and I know we have a packed meeting, but just for definition sake. That was a great list. I appreciate it. The capital projects that are, you know, township capital projects for parks. Is that, does that include things like stormwater? So like if Public Works at Two Deck Park were to go out and rebuild some stormwater facilities and et cetera, et cetera. Would that be under capital projects or something else in that list?
A stormwater, so generally speaking, if we're referencing, you know, creation, you know, the management of an infiltration basin, for example, that would not be a capital project within Parks and Recreation. If we're talking about a green infrastructure or a green feature, for example, so out at Homestead Park, we do have the what we call like low mo or grow zone area. That would be something that is coordinated and discussed through Ferguson Township Administration with the support and participation of Public Works. Does that answer your question directly?
Well, I think, I think so. So when you go back to your, you don't have to go back to it, but the slide that had that nice list of the green, the green list of the it says, yeah, Ferguson Township, it said our Public Works, and you go down that list. Capital projects is actually between Ferguson and CRPR, Operation and Maintenance.
Right. Thank you for pointing that out. I will be sure to, to address that. It should be couched under Ferguson Township.
But wait, actually, no, I actually kind of maybe love that it's not because it, it's both. CRPR A does do capital projects. It's just not the same ones. So when we're looking at the breadth of all of this, it adds understanding actually to the complexity of it when we both are sharing capital projects for Park and Recreation, like for example, Whitehall Road Regional Park. But anyway. You, you were meaning that the stormwater stuff that Public Work does do in our parks is or is not included under capital projects?
Well, and so since you actually, since you've been talking, I mean, there's, for example, Homestead Park Playground Equipment Installation. When capital projects was referenced, the initial thought was that there's a great deal of collaboration and conversation that happens, right? So Center Region Parks and Recreation, they provide a great deal of input based on park usage, regular, you know, whether it be complaints or recommendations, they receive a lot of that information generally from park residents, understanding that CRPR, Center Region Parks and Recreation Agency are out there on a daily basis. Our township engineers through the Public Works Department clearly help and assist with providing location of playground equipment. Proposing playground equipment, assist with ensuring that we're meeting ADA requirements and their, their engineering, the playground equipment installation and awarding the bids and purchasing the equipment. Whereas the Administration Department is kind of bringing everyone together to facilitate what I referenced in this slide as the strategic project teams, right? So we'll often coordinate, oftentimes coordinate meetings with someone from CRPR, someone from Engineering Department, as well as our Playground Safety Inspector through the Planning Department and myself. And so all of us have conversations and we all have our part in facilitating the playground installation or, or repair that's exceeding the, the cost that CRPR would provide a repair for. So hopefully that answers your question. But capital projects, you're right, there is, there are examples where we could see it kind of crossing over in CRPR's world as well as ours. But for purposes of this presentation, the thought was that it was couched under Ferguson Township. So I'm going to quickly just kind of go through here on this slide. I provided some examples of services that are generally facilitated through the Public Works Maintenance Program. So there's GIS here at the Township. They generally will provide services in that they're creating maps. Whenever there's a tree planting buffer, for example, that's being recommended either by a resident, staff or board member. We, we use the GIS technicians' skills and access to tools and software to prepare maps. We also have a Township Arborist who will also provide assistance with the tree planting plan or assist with the bed, you know, landscaping, bed maintenance and tree plantings. And we also have crews that are out in the parks, providing assistance with mowing in some of our grow zone areas that CRPR may not have the, the mowers to be able to, to facilitate some of that that, that area. As well as Public Works, you know, they also participate in the strategic project teams referenced in the earlier slide. And this slide is introducing some of the services that is, that are facilitated through Center Region Parks and Recreation, particularly the Maintenance and Operation Program. And these are services that I have, I'm presenting to you this evening based on several conversations. We also, you know, we had interdepartmental meetings, but I also took several hours to meet with the Director of the Center Region Parks and Recreation. And I feel pretty confident that I was able to detail a list of the work that CRPR does. It's not final before this goes back in front of the board or for public comment. I do hope to have another meeting with the Director of Center Region Parks and Recreation, but this does illustrate a, a pretty good list of the services and provided some examples of the act service levels through providing examples of activities. I, I won't go through each one of these. They're here for you all to read. I tried to, to make it pretty easy to visually see at a glance. The next slide focuses more on the Recreation Operations and Programs and Events in terms of services and service levels that are being facilitated by Center Region Parks and Recreation. So these are the last two slides presented. Here, Center Region Parks and Recreation Maintenance and Operations Program Summary, and Center Region Parks and Recreation Operations and Event Services are currently services that are being facilitated through CRPR. So in front of you this evening in the agenda, there is a narrative and I, I did write in and I want to present to you next, which is, well, how exactly has staff decided what, what we feel might be the best approach to present to the board, which is this scenario-based approach that we're proposing to develop a cost benefit analysis for the board to, to be able to compare the estimated cost of providing services in-house versus being a participant in the Council of Government Center Region Parks and Recreation Agency. So we broke it into these scenarios. Scenario one, for example, would be if Ferguson Township added on these additional services. To the far left here, the way the slide's been broken up is to propose that if we only, you know, Ferguson Township only absorbed the park's operation and maintenance. And the services at, you know, big picture, not broken down into service levels or activities. We would assume additional services in the daily park maintenance, the daily work orders and repairs, services pertaining to contracted services. So for example, we have the Porter Johns are coming to mind. The bathrooms, the porter, I want to say porter potties, but I know that's. All right, you get what I'm saying when I say porter potties. Okay, so there's contracted services in that realm, right? That CRPR currently coordinates and facilitates that activity for us. That's an example of the contracted service that we would absorb, that we currently don't. And then, of course, miscellaneous daily repairs that currently are being done through CRPR. And any township-wide park initiatives that might fall within or under the park operations and maintenance daily services. Key considerations for cost benefit analysis, this work has not been done, but this again is how we're being proposed to bring it back to the board in the future. Are what are additional administrative act services and service levels? Management software, so for example, they currently have RecDesk and they have the ability to be able to process repairs and, and and do various activity through using that software. There's additional equipment needs and with additional equipment comes additional maintenance as well as park operation and maintenance is, you know, in terms of services and service levels, what does that look like? What are the personnel needs to be able to provide these additional services? And if we only absorb, for example, in scenario one, park operations and maintenance, then what we'll also assess to be able to present to the board is what if, what does the reduction of services and service levels look like? So hopefully that makes sense. I'm going to go on to slide two and I'm hopeful with slide two, it'll start to help illustrate how we're proposing to present a scenario-based approach. So scenario two is still park operations and maintenance, but adding in the additional service of rentals and reservations as well as sports, sport field management maintenance. So in scenario one, we didn't have the rentals and reservations and/or sports field and management and maintenance. So in scenario two, same key considerations will be evaluated for cost benefit analysis to be presented to the board at a later time. And just breaking it down with the same areas of focus, what is the additional administration, management software, equipment needs, equipment maintenance, park operation and maintenance, personnel needs, and what does reduction of service activities look like? And then scenario three would be for Ferguson Township to add in as part of a parks program for this cost analysis to be able to be able to present for your, for the board's consideration, would be everything discussed through parks operation and maintenance. Also including rentals and reservations, sports field management, maintenance. And then also general programming, camps, pools and aquatic programs and the social media and marketing that would be required to be able to facilitate the same level of services and service levels and activities that residents currently experience. So with that, that's just a, a real quick preview as to kind of how how we're trying to process and evaluate for a cost benefit analysis to be presented to the board. Next steps, we've discussed and I believe it has been scheduled or will be scheduled, the Park Governance Work Session. So the board can further discuss this scenario-based approach and items that they would like to see considered, a public engagement component, of course, as well as a final presentation to the board for Board of Supervisors Review and Consideration Fraction. And I will end with one quick plug-in for the Ferguson Township Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan. As one of my pictures here, it's a picture of the Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan Update flyer. So residents are invited to come, share their ideas and help shape the future of Ferguson Township Recreation Parks and Open Space Plan at the Winter Market being held at the Rivet this Saturday from 12:00 PM to 16:00 AM. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank, thank you so much, Sentry. I am really impressed with what you all have done. That is such a methodical and clear approach that you've taken. I want to weep, honestly. It's so good. Thank you so much. I think it's, I, I really think that the way you conceptualized it in services, it seems like it's one of those brilliant ideas because it's so simple, but like it's so profound too. I just really appreciate that so much. And how you broke them out in the levels, fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for Sentry? I mean, it was so, so very well done. Lisa, I think I see your fingertips above your name.
Yeah, because I'm not exactly sure what my question is, but I guess. You know, I think more will come out when we have the work sessions. So I guess my interest here was knowing about the cost and benefit balance. So for example, you know, is so if, you know, I'm interested in knowing that the percentage that we pay into the parks is balanced with the other townships. So for example, we build and repair pavilions and then Parks and Rec rents them out and they do that work of renting them, but then they collect that revenue. You know, so we have a certain number of pavilions and, you know, soccer fields and that kind of thing. How does that factor into what our municipal share is based on what other municipalities are providing for rental? That's just an example. And then with maintenance, so you know, there's, we mow, no, we, they mow the parks, but we mow a little bit sometimes. There are some places. So just kind of where is that breakdown compared to what the other municipalities do? We do safety checks on our playground equipment. Do the others do that? And we do replacement of our water fountains. Do the other do that? So I'm, I'm more interested in just making sure those costs are balancing out for residents. You know, not so much absorbing, you know, these, all this, what they're doing, what Center Parks and Rec is doing, but just making sure that the numbers are making sense and figuring out the, you know, formulaic differences there. So I guess I'm hoping that some of that comes out in the work session. So that's, that's kind of where I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned, you know, I just, I, so I, I wanted to put that out there. So if there is some, you know, budgeting, some, you know, numbers we can bring to that. That's what I'll be interested in seeing. So I can leave that there, knowing we're going to have the work sessions.
I think, I think Lisa too, the way, so I was, I was also conceptualizing it a little bit more like you are seeming, seem to be vocalizing right now. But I've been thinking a, a lot about this upcoming COG Governance Committee. And thinking about how, like how we can approach this complicated conversation in the same way that Lisa, you and I approached it that day on Route 45 when we were handing out the Route 45 Getaway Staff in the three, right, the municipal parks, the regional facilities and programs. And when you look at that staff list, right, you can see that first part, operations and whatnot. It's all about that. That second part, you've got the programs and the, so the way they're conceptualizing, organizing our thinking about it matches with the existing structure that can be very difficult to talk about because we always insist on calling it the system when it's actually three, it's a three-in-one special. So I think that the way they've conceptualized it teases out that complexity without adding to it. I think it's really, I think it's pretty, pretty well done. And, and yes, what do I, I think then comes the hard work of looking at the numbers, because I think what COG really wants to do is, is get some data. So if it, you know, scale matters, right? So maybe at one time it made sense for one per, one entity to mow a billion parks. Maybe it doesn't make sense anymore. We have to be able to conceptualize it in chunks in a way that we can break those things out. So it's, in that sense, it's not going to be a small endeavor, but I, that's why I was thinking the way they did that, it might, it might, it might give us some someplace to start there. But then what you're saying, that's got to eventually come so we can make the informed decisions about what scale of structure suits needs of the township and the region the best.
So I'll, I'll just, I'll just follow up to Lisa's comment. Very similar to what you said, Chair, did any, I, the key considerations for cost now, cost benefit analysis. That's where, you know, assuming this proposed scenario, you know, the proposed scenario-based approach is an effective way to conceptualize it. Now it allows us then to kind of quantify what these costs are, right? So you could look at it to say like if Ferguson Township absorbed it or just acknowledge this is the cost that, that we would have to pay in. If CRPR wasn't doing it for the amount that we pay as, to be a participant in the program. And so then it kind of gives the board the ability to do some compare analysis. But the second part in this process would be to try to put some numbers with, for example, what is the additional administration look like? Or management software. And it really is a second conversation with the Director of Center Region Parks Integration. Because they already do this. In terms of getting a cost analysis in comparison to what the other municipalities pay in. That was not part of the plan, but we can add that in. But we wouldn't know kind of like what they're being, you know, what each municipality's return on investment looks like. If that's a good way to say that, we could just report on what ours looks like based on this conceptualized scenario-based approach. If that makes sense.
I, I think, I think, I think so. Yeah, I, I've thought about this, as you all know, for some time. And, you know, it, it also, it, it got me started down the road of asking Dave Modricar about his budget. And can we make, can we make a notation on what things bill, you know, our park costs? Because it got the idea of, of how difficult it would be to try to even get an assessment of the capital investment of each of the five or six, depending on how you want to count it. Center Region Municipalities, just, you know, because, because it's been an evolving system instead of an intentional system. We don't have any kind of a, we don't even really have a strategic manner in which we identify them. Much less do we coordinate such with the rest of the region. So it's becomes quite the task to, you know, really understand the value of our park system. And I think that it, it's worth it though, because there has to be a basis by which we make the statement that we have the third largest park system in the region. I don't think it's just the acres, but maybe I'm wrong. But anyway, I could talk about this a long time. Does anybody have any other comments? Steve?
I, I just wanted to comment that I think we're and, and this is something we can deal with in the work session. But I'm not clear on what our goal is here. If it's a question of how much are we spending? And is it going to be, you know, is it cost effective for us? In other words, would it cost us a lot more to do it ourselves than to have CRPR doing what they're doing? I think that's a pretty straightforward bit of information to get to. If we're trying to get information on how our contribution compares to every other municipality. And are we doing, is, is everything fair? And should we be looking at, you know, how the formula is set up? I'm not sure that's something that our staff should be doing. I, I think that should be, that's, you're looking at a study that is going to be a whole lot more than, I think, the time that we'd be willing to put into it. I, I mean, I originally thinking the question was, are we getting value for our money? But I think if it's going beyond that, we need to really consider what we're asking. And I think we're asked, you may be asking more than we should be if, if we're getting into that. That's just a comment, and I think for the, the work session, I'll maybe have that a little more thought out. This is just my reaction as we're discussing now, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think for me, I think that the trajectory of the conversation has changed a bit. I think that the, the information that's being sought is always the same information. For me, it always, it always, it always has been. I keep coming back to needing the same kind of information to do my job well. Because of the complexity of the system. But I think because the COG has now involved themselves in the dialogue of parks governance. That the goal of our conversation here should be allowed to, to grow with that, that dialogue. And, you know, we make up a million different ways that we can participate together and interact together. And here we've just, here we just made up another one. So where we're having this dialogue and our staff has been requested by us to look into some information. But then there's a simultaneous dialogue going on at the regional level. That's going to maybe look into some of those more kind of complicated sorts of things. And I think that this data is going to be really invaluable in that conversation. Because when we say, we have no idea how that's much is going to cost us or save us or how will this or that or we, you know, it's, we've already got it. Maybe a chunk of that information there in a way that's really easily understood. That can help us all have a non-reactive learning. Metamorphizing, getting to a good structure together kind of dialogue. So how's that for a goal, for a, for a governance goal for you, Steve? Put that in motion, right?
I, I'd rather not do that. No, I just basically, my comment is, we need to be careful how much we're asking our staff to do in terms of analysis. And not, you know, not get into something that really requires a study by somebody who knows more about what they're doing than we do. And I, I, I think we could easily fall into that second category if we're not careful. That's, that's my only word of caution on that.
Gotcha. Lisa?
And that's fair. I think after Centrice explained what her process is, I think I get it. I think we're looking for the same thing, just, so I think, I think that makes a lot of sense.
All right, um, we have no action. This was just discussion that will be continued. I, I think you're on a great track and thank you very, very, very much. So let's move on to the review of the draft zoning and subdivision and land ordinance amendments. By, introduced by Ms. Jenna Worgo, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. In November twenty twenty, or twenty nineteen, Township completed its comprehensive update to the zoning subdivision land development ordinance. Since those amendments, staff has been tracking errors and emissions while interpreting the ordinance and is recommending additional amendments to address these issues. The board was provided this draft during the August second regular meeting and referred the draft planning commission to review and comment. Since that time, planning commission has reviewed the draft twice, provided additional comments and recommendations to staff. Provided with the agenda is an updated copy of the draft ordinance amendments for the board to review and provide additional comments. The board is being asked to authorize advertisement of the zoning amendment and Sado ordinance amendment for a public hearing on December thirteenth. Twenty twenty-one, and I even have a more up-to-date draft based on meeting with the Township Solicitor. So we have further clarification. I can highlight big changes based on planning commission's review. That the board would be interested in. I know that in August, I believe it was missed in any one in planning commission specifically to look at PRD post-final amendments and what planning commission could review and what the board could review. So planning commission did work on that closely. Other big amendments, the food truck ordinance. As well as residential structures that would have to go through land development review. And then we've also added conditions for large dirt piles as storage in certain zoning districts. So that would be staff's recommended conditionaries for those. So I'm happy to walk everyone through this. First thing that we will come across is probably the, yeah, minor land development plan option. So under this, most specifically as the changes that a planning commission looked at was for residential structures. So the RA zoning district allows up to three residential homes to be located on the lot. The MPC requires that any more than one residential home or lot is a land development plan. Staff has been implementing that and the board has seen a good amount of modification waivers from those requirements. I think the township has always required zoning permits for those additional homes on the lot. So this would essentially recognize what the state requires. And essentially putting in this modification process for those residential structures that may have to go through land development reviews. So it's really for the additional homes on those ag lots. As well as certain homes that may have been required land development review because of slope controls. And after working with Betsy on that. I guess my understanding is that Patton also has similar requirements with slope controls and what they do with the ag lots with additional residential homes. And that she would recommend that the single residential structures that are required to go through land development shall be reviewed by township staff and then included on the consent agenda for the Board of Supervisors to approve or deny the plan. What we found with these residential homes is that usually they're included on here because of the soap controls. Which is a technical review by staff. If it was any other circumstance, all residential homes is a zoning permit by the township zoning officer. And that's it. So we're trying to get these as close, these certain instances as close as we can to what is required for any other residential structure. Any questions on that? I can't really see anyone, so you're going to have to follow up me. Okay. Next, we are looking at PRD section. That's page thirteen. So for PRD, most specifically the post-final amendments to these plans. For the most part, planning commission and staff was in agreement with trying to keep the amendments that planning commission would review. Relatively similar to what any other land development plan could utilize through the minor alteration process. To try and keep these processes similar. So changes that planning commission would review would be landscaping, the rearrangement of the open space. Not any increase or decrease in that open space signage, relocating of the lighting, rearrangement of bicycle parking. Would be approved by the township after authorization by planning commission. And then for the board, any rearrangements of lots, blocks, building tracks, locating siding, height of building structures. Rearrangement of lots. That would all be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors in that context. Planning Commission was comfortable taking on these amendments, realizing that any changes that the applicant would request. They have to comply with our lighting ordinance, our sign ordinance. And to make it an easier process for applicants for to have these post-final amendments on these large PRDs. To keep it consistent with minor alteration process. As close as we can to it.
I have a quick question, Jenna and Dave. Are you all thinking that we'll go through each of these and then have discussions? So right now, we're just, I know I'm the chair and I can pick, but I'm not, I'm not doing well tonight. Are, are you thinking we're going to go through it all and then have discussion? Are you thinking that we should be having discussion while we go through it?
Well, I, I think what we really are looking for from the board tonight is pretty open-ended. I mean, we can talk about the specific points. We can have a broader conversation about the thematic changes that you're looking at. So things like a lot more allowance for staff to approve some plan changes and modifications. We can kind of table the discussion if the board is interested in, in considering these matters more carefully at a future time. Really, we just wanted to get these draft amendments back in front of the board. And then, you know, leave it to you all to tell us how you want it to proceed, whether you think it's ready for a public here, authorization for a public hearing. We have certain prescriptive time periods that we have to meet for allowance for comments by the county and other agencies. And of course, legal advertisements, et cetera. Or whether you think we really need to start moving in a different direction on some of these. So really, it's a big topic and there's a lot of nuance to it and a lot of specific things that are taking, that are being proposed for, for amendment. So you can get as granular as you'd like tonight, or if you wanted to just allow, you know, kind of Janet to, to run through the, the major amendments. And then if there's any questions that you have at the end, and then we can kind of go forward from there. I guess we really didn't have a planned outcome, just leaving it up to you all to tell us what your thoughts and questions would be.
Thanks. Um, I, I had forgotten, we had briefly talked about that, that in our meeting. Thank you for refreshing my memory. Thanks Jenna, you can go ahead and run through it. If anybody has questions, go ahead and pop your hand up, but we'll see if Jenna can run through the document and then have discussion.
And I'm only highlighting the major changes based on planning commission's review and other instances that staff has come across. For instance, the variance that the board heard for the public works building on solar, that's also included in this draft as well. So there have been a few last minute things that have come up that was not on that original draft from August. All related to issues that we have come across since that time. Next would be the dirt pile. So this, for the storage of land clearing material. Staff is recommending that this would be a conditional use in the RA and AR zoning districts. The applicant would have to comply with all zoning district regulations, setback, height, et cetera. Stormwater management, erosion, grading controls, erosion, sedimentation requirements. As well as the proposed use would not store hazardous materials on site. I have seen ordinances that have included required screening for these types of uses. A lot for the visual effects as well as safety precautions. That's not included. That's more of an open-ended that we'd like to get some input on from the board on other conditions that you may want to include with that type of use. Food trucks. So I would say the biggest change with the food truck ordinance was this number two. So planning commission recognized the amendments that the board recommended for food trucks operating in parks and places of assembly and residential zoning districts. So previously, there seemed to be this call out for general commercial, industrial in the RD zoning districts and the operation hours. And then it was just every other zoning district can operate at X times. So I think when planning commission saw this allowable time for the parks and places of assembly and residential districts, they're like, well, we have these other mixed-use zoning districts that aren't necessarily completely residential. And maybe there's this middle area that we can figure out for these districts. So we've looked at the village, the terrorist street scape and the traditional town development zoning districts. And allowing hours of operation from seven to eleven for food trucks. That was the biggest change in this ordinance. The other larger one, I think planning commission has just recognized that this type of use is quick. And all municipalities, if we are going to regulate this, we need to be nimble and able to do this. And help and permit these types of uses quickly. Um, so they didn't recommend having approval for this type of use. I think we had the right-of-way usage going to the board of supervisors for approval. Um, that it would all be at staff review level and approval for this. Um, all of the type of uses to recognize the nimbleness that goes with this type of use and not waiting for a board meeting to get approval um, for that type of permit. I think those were the larger changes. We also added back in places of assembly. Um, the definitions of each type were pretty vague in staff's opinion. And there was no real way to quantify what's the difference between regional and neighborhood and community, this is assembly. So we've included uh, back in those capacity levels. Those are the major changes that planning commission looked at.
Thanks so much Jenna. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I think if you all don't mind, I'm gonna get started. I'm afraid that I'm not gonna keep them in my mind if I don't, honestly. Um, the uh, poof, and just like that, it's gone. Wow. Um. Jenna, what was the last thing you talked about?
Places of assembly or food trucks?
Uh, it was places of assembly. Um. The definitions of them? Yeah, the parking associated with them. So uh, this seems to be a little bit of a quirk of places of assembly. I've noticed it with the farmer's market. So in our code, the park somewhere, the parking that is associated with places of assembly is related to the seating.
Occupancy.
Yeah.
Okay.
But when we have something outside at a place of assembly that has no relationship whatsoever to the occupancy inside the place of assembly, we can have some serious parking issues. So in the code, it is not handled anywhere. What happens when a place of assembly wants to have outdoor events that have no relation to their occupancy? And then we haven't accommodat-, we haven't made sure that they can accommodate for parking. So this seems like it's a pain point to me. Um, I don't think we handled it. Um, but it all revolves around place of assembly. Because the, at least that I know of, that's the only situation that that occurs really on a regular basis. Might occur at somebody's house, through somebody graduates, whatever. It's a once and done, but a repeat occurrence. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Thanks, thanks. Um, I, I'm gonna go to others and see if they have anything. I'm gonna consult my list then. Any questions or thoughts? Lisa.
I just had a couple of things on the minor alteration. Um, and I guess it's basically, you know, what, what does the MPC allow to be added to a minor alteration under that definition? So like, could we add lighting or a height change or a change of use to that?
Uh, that's completely open to the governing body, uh, what they would like to include in the minor alteration plan. Uh, I think looking back at the nineteen eighty, some zoning ordinance that I have on my desk. Uh, these have been pretty consistent over the years. I was actually surprised. Uh, but yeah, that's completely open to whatever the board would like to include or not include. That is one of the amendments staff is recommending in this draft, which you'll see later, modification waiver for T-Mobile site. Um, our old previous ordinance um, had unlimited amount of minor alterations for changing use and signage changes for businesses, as long as additional parking isn't being required. Um, that was changed in the most recent update. Staff recommended we go back to what we originally had. It's not very business friendly um, to have them go through a land development plan just to have a new business go in. Place that's isn't requiring any additional changes, but that's completely up to the board. Any other stuff you'd like to add? Yeah?
I think that makes sense, cause then when you look at something else that's not included right now, like a change in use or lighting or height, you know, it's much more significant than what you're talking about. So I mean, I'd be interested in looking at that because these don't come to the board, right?
Yeah, as by staff approval. Um, and depending on the type of change and what is required, uh, it's typically a zoning officer, myself and the township engineer that reviews the minor alterations.
Yeah, um. So I mean, that would, that'd be something I'd be interested in looking at. I don't know if it's um.
And the one change I would say from the old um, older zoning ordinances is the landscaping. Landscaping was also held to a ten percent uh, change, which I thought was funny because we get requests from a lot of business owners who wanna update their landscaping on site. And if it's greater than ten percent, they can't, they have to go through a land development plan for it.
Hmm.
So um, staff did recommend changing that to any and all landscaping, as long as they're complying with their current ordinance. Uh, that could also be done through minor alteration.
Jenna, what is it ten percent of?
Ten percent of the total.
Of what?
Of the landscaping on site. So we will look at what was required with the approval of land development plan. If they're changing more than ten percent of the, the trees that were planted as required by the ordinance at that time. They'd have to go through.
You mean in species? I'm sorry. So like if they wanted to plant ten aspen instead of.
Down to species, yes.
But what if they wanted, I mean, what if they wanted to not put in maple and put in a bunch of shrubs? How does that equal a percent?
Uh, it's just a percentage of the trees that they would be removing and replacing with those shrubs.
You said landscaping before. Is it?
Yeah, all landscaping. So uh, with land development, we have our buffer ordinance. Um, yeah. And then we have the plantings for the um, islands and the parking lots. Those are pretty much only was required by our ordinance. A lot of these land development plans, they went through the process back in the eighties and nineties. And they've been held in time because they don't wanna have to go through a land development plan to add additional shrubs and trees to the property and make it look nicer.
I have never once seen a property owner want to add additional shrubs and trees to their property. They always want to cut them down, is what they want to. Um, and I also can't imagine, since they cut them down without permission all the time, that they would be like, oh, we can't plant this here, cause the township won't let us, but you know, they know better than I would. Um, okay.
Yeah, Lisa, I mean, if you would like to explore that further, um, we can also send that back to planning commission as well. Uh, if they wanna look at other areas, we can.
I mean, my thought is that, you know, this is gonna be, this is redevelopment of existing buildings. So you're gonna have some impact on the, you know, whatever neighborhood you're in, you know, if it's around other businesses or residential areas. So it has an impact on an existing area. So that's, that's kind of why I'm interested in, in adding a couple of things so that it's known, or you know, having them come to the board, maybe. I'm, that's my thought. Um. So that, that was one thing. Um. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's the minor, wait, was that the minor alteration?
Yeah, minor alteration plans. So they go through um, for zoning officer approval, essentially will take the um, old land development plan will cross out the signature box. They'll resubmit under that one. And it's reviewed by staff, approved by staff, and then that gets reported at the county.
They get to call Jenna the man.
Uh, I, I think Ms. Strickland hit the point right on the head. It, it depends on where your comfort level is as a governing body, delegating that authority to staff, understanding that you're not giving carte blanche to staff to approve any, you know, modifications that you are okay with. Uh, but perhaps there are plans such as that mo- modifications, like as you pointed out, it's lighting, height, situation of buildings, whatever it might be, the more allowing you get or the less restrictive you get in that regard, then of course, the more staff review and staff approval uh, will be permitted. And then conversely, the, the less restrict or the more restrictive you are in that regard, then the more cost associated with presentation of plan modifications, the more time it takes and the less business friendly, as Jenna pointed out, it may be perceived as. So you know, it's, it's, and everybody does things just a little bit differently. In fact, you'll find a lot of disparity even within the center region where, for example, in State College Borough, Borough Council never sees land development plans. So that's all delegated out through their planning commission to their staff. And so you can really be as fluid as you'd like to be based on what your level of comfort is as a governing body. Historically, the boards really wanted to see these plans and have opportunities to provide comments, conditions, and then ultimately give approval to uh, most amendments with a few exceptions.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. So I, this is one thing I would like to take a longer look at because I think it's um, it's complicated. And um, but I think there are some good things we could do with it. So I don't, and I know it's a big process to open this up and send it around for approvals and review, or reviews. And um, so that's my suggestion.
Thanks. Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to think about that a little bit more too. And there was another area that I wanna think about a little more. Um, there's a few things I wanna bring up for tonight. Uh, just to see what the rest of the board thinks about it. Um, you talked about the, the dirt piles and perhaps um, adding other conditions. Um, and where you were thinking of allowing them. So I think it's, I think it's irresponsible to allow them in residential districts. And I know that some folks who live in RR have a non-residential lifestyle. But other folks that live in RR have a very residential lifestyle. So the I, it's, it's the most diverse, in my opinion, the most diverse uh, zoning district we have, in my opinion, in regard to that. So I think that if we're allowing that kind of a activity, we need to be very, very careful about where we're allowing it. Um, that's got the same kind of a negative impact on an entire community as a mine would. And so I think that we should not be allowing that on RR parcels. I can't remember the, the exact numbers, but I'm not going for the ten or more either, whatever the next bracket up is. Is it twenty-five? Is it a hundred? I would, I would maybe go for that in that level of the RR. Um, cause we also probably don't have very big setbacks in the RR. I mean, probably bigger than R1, but um, with how our resid-, our residential areas are sandwiched. Um, I'd like us to, 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 to look at that. And then I think you were saying we could actually put the conditions on it. So I've noticed at the one fill site that we have in the township that I, I don't actually know if there's something that we can do about this in regard to our zoning code, but if there is, I'd like us to consider it. Um, where they have their operation, um, they come out of their own private road, which is a gravel road. Um, and it's, it has debris on the road all the time, all the time, and it's a big road for cycling. Um, so there's cyclists going through there all the time. And so I don't know if this is even possible, but can we, as a requirement of their land development plan, make sure that their driveway, even if it's only fifty feet from the road, you know, I don't, not talking about the whole thing or something. Um, but where they enter that, that public roadway, could we require that they pave that, that entrance for some, for some uh, um, be twenty feet, I don't know, twenty, fifty feet, whatever we think is gonna um, not then bring all their, their uh, debris out on the road. Could we can, could, is that possible for us to consider that?
Um, staff hasn't even considered requiring a land development plan for this type of conditional use. And that can also be a condition as well, and then we can address those concerns. But any condition that the board feels is for the health, safety, general welfare of township residents, those conditions can be included under the conditional use.
Yes, 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 absolutely. I'm sorry. Yes, I think both mining operations and operations like this, if they can fall under land development plan, they should, cause the folks need to have an opportunity to understand for the most they possibly can, as long as amount of time they can for those.
And staff has recognized the, I would say the residential areas of the township and how sensitive they are. And that's why we are only recommending right now for the um, RA and AR zoning districts. We don't even wanna include it in rural residential.
Oh, why do I hear RR? I'm telling you, it must be, I'm gonna blame every single thing on my fever tonight, by the way, so y'all know. Um, okay, I'm sorry, I misheard. Apologize for that.
No worries.
I, I might feel less, well, no, I don't, cause everybody takes those roads and you never know where the zoning district, yeah. I, I still feel about the, the paving. I still feel strongly about that. Any other thoughts, Lisa? I think I saw your hand up. Was your hand up?
No, but I did have a couple more things, so throughout right now. Uh, one was on the required bicycle parking spaces. Um, for short term and long term. Um. Did they increase at all? And do you think they're high enough?
Uh, for those, let me find that table.
There were a lot of different uh, uses that had different requirements.
Yeah, so I think after staff um, reviewed these, these are um, copied and pasted from best practices in the nation. I know Patton is also reviewing the bicycle parking requirements. Um, and we have been working um, as a region, planners anyways, try to have somewhat consistent um, regulations for our bike requirements. I would say our biggest um, downfall was the original ordinance. You're supposed to select um, one or the other, and our ordinance didn't. So it still had both. So after staff reviewed, especially for the multifamily developments, I think that was the biggest issue that we had, where we calculated by units, or are we gonna calculate by bedroom? And for the multifamily units, at least, we are recommending that we calculate by bedroom because that's directly related to the students that you're gonna have in that development. Um, everything else, staff is comfortable with the requirements. There is a bare minimum of two bicycle parking requirements. If any of the minor alterations or um, any other type of change in use didn't require any bicycle parking, for whatever reason, they'd still be required to provide a minimum of two. Um. Yeah, I don't think we had an issue. I think uh, Patton's trying to really simplify um, their requirements. So for example, the multifamily uh, units, they would, they are calculating X amount of spaces per bedroom, whatever that total is, if it was a hundred bicycle parking spaces were required, they're just cutting a percentage. So twenty-five percent of that total needs to be short term and seventy-five percent needs to be long term. And that's really what the difference is between ours and theirs and what they are proposing.
Okay, well, thank you for, and thanks for mentioning that it's, um, you know, you're using the standards that are uh, used regularly so that we're uh, meeting those, but it looked improved, so. Good. And I think, oh, I wanted to ask at the planning commission, there were just, there was a discussion on fee payments and disputes of fee payments during, uh, was that resolved?
That was one of the things I wanted to work on with the solicitor, just to ensure that that was addressed in our updated ordinance. Uh, we cannot withhold a land development plan if fees are not um, paid. However, there is a process and that's essentially what I've included in here, copied and pasted from the MPC that they must follow. So when we um, provide the applicant with a bill, they have so many days um, from that date to dispute it. And if they don't, they're essentially accepted. And if they don't, they're essentially accepting it. Um, and then it outlines the process within the MPC for that.
Great, thank you. So I mean, I would like a little more time to review this, but you know, I. I think um it's mostly about that minor alteration plan, but maybe, you know, maybe there's some. Some other tweaks. I think since we have it open, but you know, if there's no need to rush it, and this is just my opinion, if there's no, you know. Nothing time sensitive about getting it through the uh. Then, you know, I'd like a little more time, but that's just me.
Yeah, I agree, Lisa. I want a little more time too. I wanted to ask about. That, so I feel like I am definitely not ready to make a motion to suggest things tonight. Or have any really dialogue about that. And so um, you know, we really need to talk about it again. Before we send it to somebody again, because there's nothing new to send anyone right now. Um, so why don't we, you know, each of us think about it? We've got it. We've talked to staff about it. And then let's bring it back on the next available agenda, Dave. How's that sound? Um, and then I also have a few comments, so we're not wrapping it up yet, but um how's that sound in terms of a process? Is that good, Lisa? Okay, great, good, good, good. Um. So I'm back on the dirt pile. Oh, Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, I only have one question. Of course, you know that I'm interested in the Terrace Streets Gate District and. I thank you for getting rid of those bizarre parking, the mess. Um, I would like to know where, how, how do I find twenty-five dash five oh two? Could you tell me how to do that easily?
Yeah, I can pull it up here.
Well, just tell how to get there and I like, you know, I pulled up the meeting with this.
Yeah, we have just our code of ordinances, twenty-five would be um down here for trees. Is it twenty-five?
Looks like it says twenty-two dash five oh two.
Twenty-two.
So, so how do I get in? Oh, man.
That is um essentially if it's related to the Terrace Streets Gate parking requirements, we took out. Parking by building size and we just directly pointed to the parking requirements based on uses. For all zoning districts and that's what that is addressing.
Right, I understand that, but I didn't know how I could get to it.
You can grab the, you can get to the ordinances right from the main township webpage. Just click the link that says code of ordinances. It'll take you, you'll have to click a second link to get to general code. So you just go to the. Main webpage, click code of ordinances, and then you click view code of ordinances, I believe. And then you'll go right to the index and then you'll just look for chapter twenty-two, click on that. Everything's pretty easily. Searchable from there. So you see where Jenna's going right now.
That's that's what I wanted to know. What this is gonna continue, so I I have time to look at that.
Great. Um, okay, so a couple, just a couple more comments. I was gonna go back to dirt piles first uh. And Jenna was in there, a requirement that there be erosion, or is there already some kind of erosion control? It's in there. Okay.
Yeah, they will have to comply with stormwater erosion control. A few others in there. Uh, erosion and grading, erosion sedimentation requirements.
Great, great, great. Um, and then it it it, do we allow, did we allow on-street parking? In the village district to count for land development plan requ- parking requirements? Did we make that change? All right, let's, that's a new thing. That right there is a new thing. This is important for the economic development of a. A village, of the village. Um, so that can go on the list of things to consider as we proceed through. And other than my my usual comment of, we still haven't really looked at incentives to get more green building happening. We still haven't done that. Um, it's a whole, it's a whole other conversation. Um. But I just have to keep saying it so it stays, it stays here on the table that we're that we're still intending to. To work on that a little bit, that larger project. Um, that's all I've got. Anyone else last minute comments? All right, we'll see it again, right?
Yeah, so I can add to the the December seventh agenda. We'll look into a couple of these points. I've taken some notes. I'm sure Jenna's taken some notes. Um, and then we can work in some of the allowance for on-street parking, uh perhaps. As I'm hearing it and based on past context, mostly focused on the village district, but. Um, you know, in other words, this would be a parking allowance that would only be applicable in certain areas.
Well, we already, I think, have it in the, yeah, I think we already have it in the TTD, um, which is why.
Yeah, sort of, right. Uh, it it was kind of a condition of approval of the, it was tied into the approval of the plan.
Yeah, I am thinking specifically of Village Zoning District because. That's typically your more compact, small lot zoning that is gonna. Uh, the businesses will have trouble. I don't think they're gonna have as much trouble in other districts. Um. I'm thinking about it from that point of view. Uh, and then in terms of the environmental point of view, I'm thinking since it's now in the. Saldo and that staff will be like promoting that as a thing. Um, that we can still reduce any parking requirements that we think are smart to reduce.
Right.
Um, but specifically this one allowance, um, so that'll that'll um free up. Uh, that'll free up some parking areas for 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 businesses that want to settle in in our two villages.
And I'd recommend a parking inventory um before we start looking at that shared parking idea. Which that's easy enough. I've done them before.
Awesome. Great, thank you. That's great. Okay, all right, sounds like we're good to move on. Um, next up, we have. New business. Oh. Oh, we're not gonna make that motion. Okay, uh, next up, we have new business and we have a consent agenda. Uh, so I'd love to. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I moved for approval of the consent agenda.
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, second under new business, a public hearing on a resolution of Ferguson Township, Center County, Pennsylvania. Committing the Board of Supervisors to adopting regulations on single-use plastic bags in Ferguson Township. This will be introduced by Ms. Pam Steckler. Pam, you're up.
Okay, I'm gonna try to make this fairly short because my my other thing is gonna be fairly long, so. Um, basically, I hope you've all read it, so I'll just sort of try to go through a few of the things. The essence of the resolution is for the three municipalities, State College, Borough. Ferguson Township and Patton Township to work simultaneously. To enact ordinances to reg- to regulate single-use plastic bags and straws within the three municipalities. Uh, there was some discussion with Jesse Barlow of State College. And um Betsy Whitmer from Patton, in which we agreed to present the issue. For action within each of our municipalities. We're a little ahead of them, I'm afraid. Um, Jesse and I contributed to the resolution, uh parts of which came from. An environmental advocacy organization. It speaks of Pennsylvania's Constitutional Environmental Rights Amendment, Article One, Section twenty-seven. Which provides that we have a right to clean air, pure water, and preservation of the natural environment. Our own, our own home rule charter also contains a community environmental bill of rights. Which guarantees our right to clean air and water and a healthy environment. And um. That it's our intention to maintain and enhance the health of residents. And visitors by regulating the use of single-use plastic bags and straws. Within the three municipalities as a regional approach would be most effective. Um, that recycling efforts for single-use plastics originally promoted by the petrochemical. And plastics industries are a failure with less than nine percent of collected items actually recycled. That the life cycle of plastics is a significant threat to Earth's climate as greenhouse gas emissions of plastics. Threatened to prevent keeping global temperature rise below one point five degrees Celsius. So we resolved to create ordinances which regulate single-use plastic bags and straws. With a fee to eventually prohibit their use in the three municipalities and ours obviously says in Ferguson Township. And that's what it's about.
Thank you very much, Pam. All right, um.
Got a good summary?
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. Um, yeah, um, I also encountered a question from another board member that asked. You know, plastics contribute to climate change. Why isn't the um CAS, the COG? Climate Action and Sustainability Committee. Working on this through their climate action plan, but currently that climate action plan doesn't um. Calculate our climate impact utilizing the cradle-to-grave method, so. Because we don't have any plastic manufacturing here locally, that particular contributor. Isn't really registering and so it doesn't move the needle in that climate action plan. But I did speak with the Chair of that committee earlier today and they are. Um, climate action and sustainability, um, and you all know that they also cover refuse and recycling. Um, so it is the intention of the Chair to um, you know, lead them down the path to look at. Um, climate, or I'm sorry, uh, plastic pollution through that lens there. So it does appear that we'll ha- and as we all know here, that the COG cannot enact. Ordinance like we can, but they can certainly help to coordinate the conversation between the municipal partners. And approach it from the refuse and recycling um pathway, which looks like what they're gonna be doing. And I also did talk with the Patton Township Board Member who has not yet introduced this to her board, but indicated. That yes, this is forthcoming. So I know that one of our concerns in the past. Before the ban on bans and recently um was, you know, regional participation. And so I think Pam really. Took it upon herself to move in that direction and help um. Heard the cats, so to speak, and we are the first of the cats with the resolution on our table. Um, but we've been a leader in environmental things before, so I think that it would be appropriate for us to do so today as well. Um, but I'm just going back to make sure I'm doing procedure right and seeing. It's a public hearing. So if if there are no questions, I will open up the public hearing now that Pam has introduced the issue. I will open up the public hearing to comments from individuals. If you can limit your comments to about five minutes, that would be great. And please state your name and your municipality of residence. Uh, thank you. And I see Doug Mason of the Sierra Club has his hand up. We'll go to you first, Doug.
Hi, thanks a lot for giving me the time tonight. I I only want to make a brief statement. Um, our members are overwhelmingly behind this this resolution. We've been pushing this issue for years. In fact, I was thinking, I was in Ireland four years ago and they weren't. They were charging for bags when I went to the tourist stops. And we were talking about it back then here. So I'm hoping that tonight we can get some motion and pass a resolution so we can start the hard dust and bolt work on getting an ordinance out. And as you mentioned, Ferguson Township has led the way in so many different areas, especially environmental areas. And it's a chance for us to move ahead on this and please, let's get moving on this and. Thanks, Pam, for all your hard work and your passion for this effort.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks so much, Doug. And Neil, I see your hand is up.
Hi, um, for those who don't know, my name's Neil Hagan and I'm with the Center County Green Party and I'm the party secretary. And I'm here to convey the party's full support for the resolution to limit the use of um, plastic bags and straws. The impact environmentally and health-wise is just immense. And I would really like to thank. The Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for approaching this issue. And once again, Center County can. Look to Ferguson Township to be leading on things like this. And thanks to Ms. Steckler, uh. It's again in the front of the the front of the line. So uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Neil. And Dave Stone, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, hi, my name is Dave Stone and I I live in State College Borough, but I'm representing tonight the Nittany Valley Environmental Coalition or ANVAC and. We also support this very strongly. Uh, I think it's important, uh, very helpful up to the borough as well, that Jesse uh. Has has is now cooperating and I think that was maybe a missing component. We we had actually met with Senator Corman. Back when the ban of bags uh first came about. And uh, you know, then of course COVID intervened. So so. You know, there's a lot to talk about in in terms of scale of plastics and volume and, you know, some people will quibble and 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 say, oh, you know, this isn't a big part of the volume. But what it is a big part of is its impact on wildlife, on our streams. Uh, you know, we aren't, we aren't an oceanfront area, but we we see the effect and we have to set an example. So. Yeah, we support this. Uh, you know, it's a good start and it's really particularly a good start of the inter-municipal cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave Stone. Would anyone else uh care to comment who is attending? In public, in person, or, and I know I have some to read, in person or virtually. And then there's a few uh folks that have emailed uh and had asked if we could read their statements. Um. I'm I'm uh, as I've mentioned, not feeling great, so I apologize if I don't do it justice, but I am going to um. I am going to try to do that now. Um. Of course, my my media is not cooperating. Uh, okay, here we have one from Mr. Randy Hudson. Um, from Ferguson Township and he says, thank you so much for considering an ordinance. To reduce our use of plastics in the township. This is a very important and long-awaited step in cleaning up our region's land and water. We strongly support its passage. Randy Hudson and Cynthia Nixon Hudson. Um, so that's one. I have another uh comment from Andy McKinnon. Um, it did open, it's, it's a little bit long. Um, the public is starting to realize the tremendous. Imp- oh, and of Ferguson Township, the tremendous impact plastics have on climate change, social justice, ecosystem health. Waste disposal in other areas. Some examples include the fact that plastics production is on a trajectory. To exceed coal in GHG emissions. Twenty-twenty production was roughly equivalent to. One hundred sixteen coal-fired power plants and is expected to rise dramatically in coming years. Ethane cracker facilities which use natural gas from fracking. To produce plastics are almost always situated in low-income communities or communities of color. A significant social justice issue and huge patches of concentrated plastic garbage in the ocean caused by vast amount of plastic waste. From the mainland getting into waterways and making its way to the ocean where it wreaks havoc on marine life. Plastic production has been called the Plan B of our fossil fuel industry. The industry realizes the profits it makes from electricity production and transportation are waning. As who, as our society switches to renewable energy and electric vehicles. So it wants to make up the difference with profits from plastic production. It is an important point. That the surge to create more and more plastic products isn't coming from the public. It's generated by the fossil fuel industry itself. When we consider a local ban on single-use plastic, we are addressing the entire life cycle of plastics, including the impact it has on climate. Ecosystems, health, and so on. We are not only cleaning. Out our own closets and cleaning up our own communities. We are mitigating climate change, advocating for marginalized communities. And contributing to the health of individual species as well as entire ecosystems. Please support. And contributing to the health of individual species as well as entire ecosystems. Please support a ban on single use plastics. In our township. Again, that's Andy McKinnon. And that I believe is all I have to read on that topic. Is there anybody else that wanted to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I wouldn't mind entertaining a motion.
I make a motion, we accept it. I don't have it in front of me. I don't have the exact motion in front of me.
Well, we'll probably, we probably, we'll probably read the words here and it's a cog habit, but.
I was, I was too into listening to the comments.
Sorry.
I have it up on screen here Pam, if you want to take a look at it just so you can read.
Do you share it for you?
Yes, that the Board of Supervisors adopt the resolution committing. The Board of Supervisors to implementing regulations of single use plastic bags and straws in Ferguson Township.
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's have some discussion. Pam, you typically are allowed the floor because you made the motion. That's a Roberts rules, but you don't have to take the floor if you don't want to. But you can have it if you'd like.
I think I pretty much. That it and I'll be saying a little more later when the ordinance comes up, so.
Sounds good.
Since we don't have too much time, I'll stop for the moment.
Well, I'll offer that, I mean, this is a step of intention. It was, and done in an effort to try to coordinate. Ordinances in the region that is not done through COG but done through each municipality. So, you know, the idea of the resolution stating people's intentions or entities intentions would be. You know, a kind of a straightforward and understandable way to proceed. Knowing who all, you know, is interested in participating by doing that. So I think it's a pretty good process. Somebody more politically savvy than I thought of that. It was like, how can we coordinate this effort altogether but separate? So this seems like a good, a good idea. Does anybody have any comment on the motion? Steve?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to comment a little bit on, I, I don't. I guess I'm not clear that there's a purpose to the, that serves the purpose. Because although it states the agenda that it commits us to something, it doesn't. A resolution doesn't commit the board to anything. And I get that we're just sort of putting out there a joint purpose, but. It seems to me a resolution saying. This is what we will do when it doesn't commit us to it. I guess I'll sort of channel Yoda and say, you either do an ordinance or you don't do an ordinance. But a resolution to intend to do an ordinance, I don't quite see the purpose of. I'll probably vote for it just because. I think it doesn't, does no harm to make the statement, but I. I think it needs to be clear that it does not commit us to anything. And, um, you know, like I said, I just, I'm not sure I see a purpose to a resolution. That's all.
Thanks Steve. Others? Lisa?
I just wanted to comment that I think. The only thing I would have changed in here is the end sentence. I prob, I would have made it more like. As it stated in the motion, just maybe a little bit more vague, so not to include with a fee to eventually prohibit their use, but. What, what was stated in the motion, you know, we worked to create an ordinance to regulate use of single use. Plastic bags and straws in businesses in the township. So I probably would have just kept it. I don't know if that helps Steve's comment at all, but.
If you make that as motion, I'll second it.
I think that I, I, I guess it goes to Steve's point is, you know, a future board. If they're looking at implementing regulations on these things. Would not feel beholden to, you know, have a fee and then eventually prohibit. They'd be more flexible on how they pursue it if it came to that. So that would be my suggestion. So I would make that motion to, to amend. Well, I guess I'm making an emotion to amend.
The resolution.
Resolution to state, just to alter that sentence. So it would stay, say, to create an ordinance to regulate the use of single use plastic bags and single use plastic straws. In businesses in the township.
You're saying you would, you would change it to that Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on an amendment to the resolution. I guess it's technically an amendment to the motion, but the motion wasn't that specific, so this works. Conversation, others? I, I personally don't, I don't have a huge. You know, need to be one where the other. I think that it gets the job done either way that it's, you know. Getting that ball rolling and you know, my, one of my favorite phrases is the better is the enemy of the good. So if that, if everybody can get on board for that, works for me. Pam?
Well, you know how I feel. But if, but if this, this is going to get everybody on board, I'll go with it.
Right. Patty?
I'll go with whatever gets everybody on board.
Okay. Sounds like, it sounds like we're ready for a vote on the amendment. Which is to change the text of the resolution to the way that Lisa had stated it. Any further discussion on that amendment? Right, all in favor of the amendment to the resolution? And this is not, this is not a roll call because it's just the amendment. So all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes unanimously and now we are back to more conversation about the original motion. As amended the text in the resolution. Other comments? Seems like we might be ready for a vote and this is a roll call vote. So Dave Provoca, please.
This is presented as Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six. Ms. Dinnany?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Steckler?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes. All right, fantastic. We're moving on to zoning appeals and requests for variances introduced by Jenna Worgo. Request for variance, Team Ray Hall of State College Properties.
Thank you. Before I start, I need to add a correction. Dave and I discovered. An error in our township zoning map. We were actually able to identify a zoning amendment that was done in November of twenty sixteen that rezoned. Twenty-four, oh, oh, four seventy-nine A and twenty-four, oh, oh, four dash eighty-two commercial. So that is the correction in the ordinance. Two of these properties are general commercial. And the other two are still located in the rural agriculture zoning district. So the applicant is requesting a variance from twenty-seven, seven, oh, one, three, eight, two. Which requires that these properties be subject to floodplain conservation regulations and. Twenty-seven, seven, oh, one, three, C, one, which prohibits new development and construction in all areas that contain non-soils. Post-development area contains non, non soils. Is not a floodway or floodplain and is not subject to inundation. Recommend a motion is that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the variance request. I also have the non soils map included. If the board would like to see that as well as the ordinance amendment from twenty sixteen that we were able to find.
If I can, just to quickly orient the board, so on your. Display, you should be able to see the map of the proposed properties item as one, two, three, four. The parcel that Jenna was referencing that should be, so this red color for general commercial. Should extend down to the edge of this number two property. So that covers all twenty-four, four seventy-nine A and twenty-four, four eighty. While the variance is requested, applicable for all four of the properties. These two properties should be delineated as entirely in the general commercial zoning district. Properties three and four are in the rural agricultural zoning district.
Jenna, could you shoot that Nolan soil map, that soil map up?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So here we can see eighty-two, that is the last RA lot that is included in this request. This is eighty-one, eighty, and then seventy-nine A. The non soils you can see goes through all four of them.
I realize it's not in the floodplain, but anybody that's familiar with that area knows how. It's really just adjacent to Slab Cabin run there. So. And, you know, a lot of folks have talked about concern about encroachment in that area and. You know, we talked about it when we extended that commercial zoning. You know, here we are again. I, I, I'm not supportive of remaining neutral. I, I personally oppose this, but. Look Steve.
My thought on it is, is we've been, we included Nolan soils. In the ordinance for a reason, and it's the same reason that the floodplains are included. Nolan soils exist in a place that has at some point been a floodplain. But the Nolan soils also have characteristics that tie into the overall hydrology. That make them particularly sensitive soils. So. I think that. I guess I, I don't think we should be. Neutral in this. I'll make a motion that we oppose the. Variance, because I think the. The. Soils are too important and they're an important indicator of that area, so. So I do move that we, we.
I second.
Okay, Steve moved to oppose and Pam has seconded. Do we have any further conversation on this? I think we're ready for a vote then. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
So, if I may, typically when the board's taking positions on variances, you're asked whether you want to send the manager. Or some other representative of the township to represent your position in front of the zoning hearing board. Depending on the circumstance, I may volunteer to do so because this is a kind of a more of a technical matter. I would suggest that the board consider sending both the township solicitor and the township's stormwater engineer, NTM Engineering. To represent your position at that because there's probably going to be questions. Presumably from the zoning hearing board about the technicalities and while I can. Speak generally about floodplain regulations and what we require and why we require them. I don't know that I'd be able to respond appropriately to all of their line of inquiry. So if the board is okay with that suggestion. I can try to get the solicitor and Scott Brown with NTM Engineering to familiarize them with the, the facts of the request. And then, you know, authorize them to, to enter testimony on behalf of the township.
Sounds great, Dave.
Dave, I have a question. Do, do we really have a need for the solicitor there? I mean, I think because it is technical, I, I have no objection to sending this listener, but I'm not sure that. We're really objecting on a basis of. Yeah, I think our objection is a technical basis, so I, I don't know.
Perhaps not. It's, it's hard to say. I mean, it's really up to the board if you want to bring in legal counsel. I think this has the potential to just be one of, like a, a specific situation that may require. The advice of somebody who is more familiar with the legalities of. The variance itself or what's being asked for as well as the, the technical aspect. I'm just trying to kind of cover all the bases.
Yeah, I would go with your, your judgment on that then. I was raising the question a little bit, so.
No, I appreciate it. I, I would, I would ask that the solicitor be in attendance if she's available. To represent the township. Could go either way.
Yep, that's great. That sounds good, Dave. Take whoever you need there to, to represent that. It's great. All right, next up is request for modification at two thirty-seven Northland Shopping Center introduced by Jenna.
Thank you. Limitless PCS Inc. T-Mobile is seeking a modification for a property located at two thirty-seven Northland Center. That's twenty-four, oh, oh, four, oh, six, seven, F. It's own general commercial. Yeah, seeking relief from twenty-two, three, oh, six, two, D. Minor alteration plan. The current ordinance limits the number of minor alteration plans per property to one. And the pet supplies plus that completed a minor alteration plan back in October of twenty twenty. Utilize that buildings one minor alteration when they went in. Staff believes this was a result of an error during subdivision land development ordinance rewrite that occurred in November twenty nineteen. Strongly township has permitted an unlimited number of minor alterations for the changing use will not result in increased parking. And the changes to the proposed existing signs in the property as well as landscaping changes. So this has been noted by staff. It was included in the amendment that we reviewed earlier tonight. For being concerned for adoption. The applicant is looking to open a retail space. It was previously a business office use. That changing use is not requiring any additional parking to be provided. And is considered by staff to be a minor alteration. And a commission reviewed this request at the October fifteen, twenty-fifth. Regular meeting and recommended approval of the modification. Township staff has reviewed that application as well. We are not recommending any conditions to be included with that approval if granted. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Supervisors grant the modification request.
Thank you Jenna. All right, let's entertain a motion.
I'll move that the Board of Supervisors grant modification request.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
This is Lisa.
Patty, I'll second.
All right, any further conversation or any discussion on the matter? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And we are moving on to the authorization of public hearing for the turf grass weeds and other vegetation ordinance amendment. This will be introduced by Dave Provoca.
Thank you very much. So the board has with your agenda a redlined copy of the amended grass and weed ordinance. And you've talked about this in the past and specifically focused on some. Integration of the township's green infrastructure policy that applies to our park areas. Into this, this specific ordinance to allow for residential property owners to. Essentially install the same kinds of infrastructure on their own property and thereby would be exempt from our otherwise applicable restrictions. That keep their turf grass to no greater than six inches. Item was reviewed and referred to the planning commission. There were really two major substantive comments. One was to. Request that the board incorporate the definition of grow zone in the amended ordinance, which we included in that redlined amendment. That you have with your agenda. And that was largely to be consistent with the green infrastructure policy. It's sort of a subcategory of green infrastructure. That would apply. And then secondly, to the planning commission was, is requesting that the board maintain. The maximum height of six inches on managed turf grass. So really, those are your recommendations from the planning commission. You can keep one or both or none. And staff is looking for some direction and if you're ready to proceed, we can authorize advertisement of the ordinance for a public hearing on December sixth. As early as December sixth. Uh if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? I have a question about the whole grow zone. Put it in, take it. Is this is this one right here is working a wee bit like ping pong game? Um, it's like the things we changed got changed back. I think maybe the only things that we changed, but I'm not, I'm not sure about that. But the um not, not the grass height, the uh grow zone, keep the definition. Our conversation, I didn't think that we were asking to remove the definition. My recollection of that conversation was that grow zone was a I wish I knew the categorization language. Grow zone is a higher, larger category of all the other things. So we weren't saying remove it. We were saying restructure how it looks. And we were acknowledging that we might have to realign then with the parks green infrastructure because we're doing improvements and so we might have to do that. Did that, was that was their understanding? And they said, no, we don't think it it's a meta category. We think it's a different category because I'm having a lot of trouble reading that definition and seeing how that definition is different than meadow. It's like it, it's it's adding confusion. If we defined grow zone as this kind of, and meant this thing, this thing, and this thing, and then define them, and they went under grow zone, that would work. That would be a um, I guess a a co- a compromise. I think that's exactly what we asked for, actually, that that. Did they understand that that's what we were talking about or?
Yeah, I think it was, it was specifically couched in consistency with what we've defined in some of our parks. We do use grow zone synonymously with green infrastructure. In this case, grow zone is more just meant to be almost a catchphrase or or a or a branding tool, a marketing strategy. So that when we put the signs that we put in our parks, it's appealing, grow zone. It just sounds kind of cool. It really, there there wasn't any thought or intent put into the planning commission's recommendation as my notes reflect, other than to just be consistent with what we call some of these planted establishments in our parks. But you're right, it it really is in instead of green infrastructure, you could replace that with grow zone as the, as you said, meta category. And uh these other subcategories, planted meadow, meadow, and pollinator gardens and plots would fall under the definition of grow zone.
Right, so so for example, if we can pull this part a little bit, we wouldn't put a sign in a park that said meadow. It wouldn't, I'm trying, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to toggle back through a hundred and fifty different windows. We would not put a sign up that said planted meadow or meadow or pollinator garden and plot. We are going to sign all three of those amenities the same way and it's going to be grow zone.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. That's correct.
The way that the structure is now does not reflect that, okay? The way it is now, A, B, C, and D are equivalents, but they're not. C should go up into the category sentence. All green infrastructure defined in this ordinance shall conform to at least one of the following categories, which shall be called grow zones. And then A, B, and C are the categories of grow zones. Because the way it is is confusing. You can either not define the other three things and put them all into the grow zone definition, or you can meta the grow zone and define them the three kinds. I don't even care which, but the way it is isn't isn't accurate. That, I think that's my only, really, my only comment, other than, you know, I I I think that we had a fair amount of discussion on the the turf length and um you know, I I I would go the other direction, if any, not the toward the six. So that's, that's my thought on that particular item. Does others have any thoughts on either of those two things or others? Patty? You'll get there. It's there.
Sorry, I had to, had to bring my screen back so that I could un unmute. Um, no, I'm very glad that they went back to the six inches and that we maintained the the height. Everything else, I agree with you, Laura, um about the descriptions, but the I'm I'm very comfortable with the six inches. I was actually not comfortable with letting it grow taller. And the reason I say that is because in um many situations, just around here, I've seen um when people mow and the longer the grass, it just gets into the um street. And then it gets rained and washed into the sewer system, etc. So I just it's if it's six inches, it tends to stay on the grass more and um decompose more quickly, etc., and be more nutrients. So I'm very comfortable with six inches.
Thank you, Patty. Others? Steve?
Well, I guess uh I'll take the other side on the eight inches. I I would like to leave that at that level. I was actually surprised that it came up before I was off the board to even consider it. But and I don't know that without percentage that it's still on the table, but we'll s- we'll say. I mean, I would like to keep it at eight inches though, so.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, just out of curiosity, would you make the decision to go to ten in terms of what you are thinking about the ordinance, or are you happy at the eight?
I, my idea was to get rid of the weed and I know. It turns out, I have sold my house to my son and daughter-in-law and Lacy likes to mow and keep the grass short. So for me personally, it makes no difference.
Right, 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 right. Okay, so we'll say you're happy with eight. Um Lisa or Pam? And Pam, I don't know, you weren't, well, obviously, of course you weren't on the board because percent it was on the board, oh brother. Um, yeah, so uh yeah, percentage has introduced this is, you know, it's just mo- focused on a lot of the environmental benefits of not mowing as much. And so I don't know if you got to watch other conversation about it, but this is where we are now in the conversation.
Um. I understand why people want things to be tidy, but there's also a lot to be said for more naturalized yards. Not, not the classic shorn, perfect pesticides lawn. So I think eight is good. It's kind of a compromise between the six and the ten. And um we do have meadows as as another option for even people's front yards. That's correct. Um, so yeah, I think, I think eight is good.
Okay, thank you, Pam. And Patty, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, I guess I just, whatever is, when people are talking about eight inches, if you're talking about eight inches of grass, I mean, I think you need an even more high-powered mower to get through that length of grass. And most grass right now at at six inches is manageable with the electric mowers you're going to sell at that that are, actually, you see more electric mowers and things in the stores now. And I think if you go with eight inches or ten inches or anything like that, then it requires either a weed whacker or something more noisy. And uh, you know, what's the expression? I'd rather see your weeds and your leaves than hear your leaf blower or your weed whack, that sort of thing. And I think it's going to require even more. So I really think six inches is that sweet spot. It's not the shorn uh golf course looking that you, and I agree with you. But six inches is still quite long. I mean, if you sort of think about that.
It's Patty. And Lisa, would you like to?
I would, I I was fine with the eight, but since six is the planning commission's recommendation, I guess I would lean towards that. I agree with Patty. Once the grass starts getting longer, you need to, you know, have something different to take care of it. And if somebody wants to grow their grass longer than six inches, there's this provision where they're able to do so, so they can have, you know, a managed natural landscape. So that's, it's not that they don't have the option. This is providing for that. So I I tend to agree with Patty. And you know, to um follow the planning commission's recommendation for six.
And then, did you want to also follow the planning's commission's recommendation for the, I don't know what to call it, outline format of the other item that I had brought up, the uh grow zone and the categories versus the 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 the?
No, we had made that correction. Um, so I don't, maybe it was a a copy and paste error. I'm not sure what happened there, but we had fixed that before. So I think correcting that and including grow zone can be uh or green infrastructure verbiage can be replaced with grow zone. I think indicating that in that introductory paragraph there takes care of that and eliminating C.
Great. And hopefully then the goal is to make it back to the park screen infrastructure policy, which isn't an ordinance different, um and align that language. So we keep improving instead of being like, oh, this thing is, we have to stay at this lower level because we, yeah, yeah. It makes sense to me. Okay, so Dave, I think what we've got here is that the categorization, back to what we had mentioned before about the grow zones being in the lead paragraph and then the three items underneath it explicating what grow zones would be. And then the other item that we had discussion, I'm seeing a three, two, but I don't, I don't necessarily for sure trust that. Do we need, Dave, do you want a motion to change it? Or should I just do a straw poll for moving forward? I guess it's a motion because we're, let me see what's, what's in the agenda.
Well, the the draft in the agenda is not finalized or formatted anyway. It's really just to capture the planning commission's comments. I think the board's absolutely right by adding the grow zone language in the definition of green infrastructure. That will, uh you know, resolve the planning commission's concerns. I don't think they felt, they didn't feel strongly about it being itemized as a subcategory of green infrastructure. I think it was just their comment that they wanted to see that language in there so that it was clear that they're kind of referencing one and the same. So we got that. The six or eight inches, I was reading a three, two. Perhaps that's changed. I don't know. However, you want to do that, whether you want to do a motion or just consensus is up to you. We'll, we'll, we'll advertise whichever you uh think is is the right way to go.
Okay, thanks. Pam, did you have something you want?
How about seven?
Well, what, we are trying to, you know, I mean, the ruler only has so much.
That makes everybody happy.
Huh? I mean, it's possible. I shouldn't laugh because it is, that is, that isn't um brother, my aphasia is very bad tonight. Um compromise. Um, you certainly could consider that. I personally am sticking with eight. I think that of all the research, maybe Dave can correct me if I'm wrong. It was typically even numbers that you saw um ordinances in for whatever reason. But yeah, um, so I would stick to eight. Like I said, I'm trending toward ten, so I don't necessarily want to go smaller. I did want to mention that I did watch the planning commission meeting where they discussed this, not all of it, some of it. And one of what I, and this was the conversation I had to leave in the middle of, so I don't know everything. But one of the main points that was seeming to be made by the planning commission of why they wanted to keep the six was very interesting to me because it was because they wanted HOAs to be able to use the township for their enforcement. So that was, I thought, very interesting because we indeed came to the opposite conclusion that we did not want to use tax dollars to enforce HOA rules. Um, so I, anyway, given the same facts, rational people will come to different conclusions. That's what that uh, that's where that that'll get you. So I do think, let's go ahead and do it like a straw poll. Um, for six or eight inches. Um, so and then we can make an alternative motion, but let's start with that. So who on the board would be in favor of the six inch? And then who in favor, uh who would be in favor of the eight inch? Okay, so we do have a three, two. Do we want to entertain any motion? Right now, as it is, we're saying we'd like to change it to eight, back again to eight. Does anybody want to make a motion, a formal motion to try to change that or get some discussion going? Okay, Patty's like, no, make it end. Please, okay, so Dave, we're going to advertise for eight inches. Advertised ordinance. Oh, I mean, we actually didn't take a motion yet, so we don't know if we're advertising. Let's entertain a motion then. Which is in the packet.
I'll move that the board of supervisors authorize the ordinance for public hearing.
I'll second Pam.
That would be on Monday, December sixth. Okay, yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. That's okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right, it sounds like motion passed unanimously then. Okay, all right, um. Next up is our discussion of single-use plastic ordinance, and this will be presented by Pam Steckler. And you're muted, Pam, so you'll just want to, there you go.
Sorry. Uh, with your agenda is a couple of things. There is the ordinance, which I kind of reworked, that was the Westchester, Pennsylvania ordinance. And there was also uh an article that was from uh CIEL, the Center for International Arms and Environmental Law uh regarding plastics and climate and the hidden costs of a plastic planet. Um, the Consumer Reports one, Dave, was that in the last? Was that in our last? Uh, I thought that we were supposed to have that Consumer Reports article, the the big problem with plastic.
I linked to a couple of things that were in the narrative. Yeah, that there's a link.
Got there.
Attached, right.
Oh, okay, good. Um, and it it's called The Big Problem With Plastic, and it reveals where a plastic throwaway really ends up and explains what to do to limit its environmental harm. Um, so I'm going to introduce the ordinance. In the beginning, the oceans gave us life. Is it not our moral obligation to clean up the disastrous mess we've created? Single-use plastics, including carryout bags, straws, and many more short-term use items such as plastic and expanded polystyrene, which is styrofoam, cups, takeout boxes, plates, and plastic eating utensils are having a detrimental effect on life itself. It's my desire to eventually prohibit the use of all of these items, which are used for mere minutes and are in the environment doing damage for hundreds of years. If we do nothing by twenty fifty, there will be more plastic in our oceans than fish by weight. This is a horrifying prospect. Um, public awareness, you didn't, Dave, you didn't do those uh, get those slides, did you? Okay, I was just checking.
I I included whatever you provided me. I'm I.
Okay, well, I I didn't send him until today, the pictures. That's okay.
Oh, okay.
Be more interesting for people not to have to look at me the whole time. Um. Public awareness of of uh plastic pollution really began in earnest around twenty seventeen, which was actually when. which was actually when I started the petition. So I've been working on this for four years. And we now know that eight million tons of plastic enter our oceans each year. As with climate, we're at a code red for plastics pollution worldwide. We cannot count on our federal or state governments to do the right thing to curb an industry, the fossil fuel industry, which they subsidize and to which they offer huge tax breaks. The cost to produce new fossil fuel-based plastic is kept artificially low with global fossil fuel subsidies, five point two trillion dollars annually. This disincentivizes the use of recycled content and other alternatives. And I just want to kind of explain a little extra about how it's made. It takes fossil fuels to create virgin plastic. Cracker plants such as the, I think it's like 230 plus acre one near Pittsburgh, which received over $700,000 in tax breaks. Crack ethane to make polyethylene, that's plastic. They form tiny pellets out of it, sometimes called nurdles. These can escape into the environment and our waterways before they even get to their destination. They look like fish to many marine animals. In fact, recently I, I read about millions of them dumped when containers were knocked off of a vessel during the typhoon in 2019. And I mean, there were hundreds of millions of them that, that went into the ocean and experts have said they'll persist in the environment essentially forever. The fossil fuel petrochemical industry has foisted the issue of plastic waste on the consumer by gaming us into thinking recycling is the answer. When in reality, the only plastic that does not need to be disposed of in some manner is that which was never made. I'm sure, I, I guess I already mentioned, and I think Andy mentioned it as well in his comment. Only about nine percent of collected plastics actually gets recycled. Most ends up in landfills or dispoiling our streets, waterways, and eventually ends up in the ocean. Oftentimes, the route to the ocean is circuitous. As we ship our plastic trash to poorer countries like Indonesia and Malaysia, China no longer takes our trash as of 2018. And there are black market receivers who end up incinerating or dumping it, both of which are highly polluting. The industries have formed, one of the names of one of the organizations is the Alliance to End Plastic Waste. And includes corporations like BASF, Chevron, ExxonMobil, Dow, Formosa Plastics, Shell, Procter and Gamble, and many, many more. And while they committed to 1.5 billion to clean up, they're investing 204 billion in building over 334 new petrochemical facilities to churn out more plastic products. That's 136 times the amount than for cleanup or less than one percent of what they're investing to build out. So we already know that micro and nanoplastics are increasingly found in food, air, and water throughout the world. Recent studies have found plastic particles in 83% of tap water globally and 93% of bottled water. So it's up to us. We need to do the right thing. Bans work. Seattle banned single-use plastics and now, as of just this October 1st, the entire state of Washington has a ban. Philadelphia and Westchester and Southeast PA have bans. Pittsburgh is working on one. Entire countries have plastics bans in places, in, in place of the UK, the EU, Kenya, and several more African nations. And I actually happen to see a picture of a normally congested street in Kenya after years of the ban being a place, it was clean of plastic. It was pretty remarkable to see of, of a fore and after. So what I have proposed in this ordinance is to regulate single-use plastic bags and straws with a fee eventually leading to a prohibition of their use in all places of business throughout the township. There's included a three-month period of education after passage and six months of a 15-cent fee for each single-use plastic bag or straw provided to a customer. And this is followed by prohibition with consequences that as outlined in ordinance. My hope is that both State College Borough and Patent Township will have the impetus to do the same once we have it in place. If enough cities and municipalities in our state adopt plastics regulations, perhaps it will become a serious issue for the state legislature. They've already been, there've already been bills which languished in committee, never getting a fair he- hearing or a vote. And if our state enacts a ban, it will have a chilling effect on drilling and fracking, which continue to have a deleterious effect on our state, air and water, our forests and farms, wildlife, and the citizens of Pennsylvania. Reduction of plastics and fracking will both have a positive effect on greenhouse gas reduction and on the health and well-being of our citizens and the planet. Please let's act on this without delay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pam. And then I'll just also add, as the board knows and the public likely as well, we did discuss a single-use plastic ordinance recently. And in that, in that discussion, we reviewed the ordinance that staff had written up just as the ban on bans was happening. And so this, the way that this agenda item differs and the reason Pam wanted to make sure that it happened rapidly is there, there's, there are differences and she didn't want staff to, you know, spend time with given certain direction without us discussing this. So Pam had highlighted a couple of important aspects of this. We can talk about, talk about that a little bit, um, get some feedback and then see where we are with motion. Dave, yes?
If, if I can just add too, uh, before you start the discussion, because this, this had been discussed at a recent meeting and part of the direction at that, after the conclusion of that conversation was, uh, for me to reengage the Penn State College of Law and the Sustainability Institute and determine whether they would have capacity to kind of follow up on the study that was done in 2019 of our business community. So I did have an opportunity to do that. Um, I spoke with Dr. Laura Fowler, uh, the Penn State College of Law, who taught the class that, uh, did this first assessment a couple of years ago. She happens to be teaching the same course again in January of 2022. It's a contract negotiation and dispute resolution design class. And she indicated a willingness, provided the board was interested in moving forward to following up on, on this with another assessment of our business community. That's how I recommend you proceed if you're considering this, that you take an opportunity to reengage our businesses and determine what feedback they may have to provide. But I wanted to let you know before you started a conversation that I, I did follow up with her and that option is available to you, uh, should you want to proceed in that, in that manner.
Thank you so much, Dave. And I know the last time that she did that, there wasn't actually a pen to ordinance. It was general. There may be some value to having something more concrete before moving forward with the next level of analysis. I'm not really sure about that, but it is a thought. Okay, let's have some conversation, uh, before we entertain a motion. We want to talk about differences. How would we like to approach this? Steve?
Uh, I'll bring up, uh, again, my, I guess, uh, opposition to including plastic straws in the, in any ordinance that we would go forward with. Uh, I know that they are 99% of the time unnecessary. Uh, but I'm concerned about the 1%. And that's the, the people that actually need to have some sort of straw. I know that there, you know, there are, uh, uh, alternatives such as paper straws, but they don't work as well. And I would just say that when you have someone who's having trouble manipulating, and particularly when you toss in any cognitive problems along with it, it can be really frustrating. And I think that, uh, the plastic straws, you know, I, I haven't found, I don't see a, a reasonable substitute in those cases. Uh, I think, you know, bringing your own is an option, but that's not always an option. The other things like paper straws are an option, but I can see those being, uh, uh, additional frustrations. So you know, going, going forward with it, I would, uh, definitely be opposed to including straws in it. But that's the main thing I had on it, so.
Okay, and, um, all right, so Steve's introduced one issue. Are there other thoughts on other matters? We can get a couple out on the table and then talk about them. I think was another difference, Pam, one focused on a ban and the other focused on, I'm sorry, one focused on a fee and the other focused on a fee to ban. So we're looking at the question of proceeding with one or the other. In this, this particular ordinance, this is, this is moving in the direction to ban eventually, right?
Yes.
And then the other one, yeah.
It's three months of education and, uh, what was it, six months of the 15-cent fee. By the end of that time, most everybody should know all about it and will have secured their own method of carrying stuff and the stores will have gotten rid of all their extra plastic bags. And that's when the prohibition comes in. So it's, you know, it's nine months from time of passage. And, you know, the three, three months could be extended to six months and six months and six months, you know? That's debatable, but the essence of, of getting to the ban, it, it makes a real statement that, that we shouldn't be using plastics. And, and I think that's very, very, very important. We, we've been lulled into this societal, oh, plastics are wonderful and I get all my berries in them and they're perfect and, and we've been duped. It's, it's all been a big game by the petrochemical companies to, to get us to, to accept them. And they're very, very, very damaging to our planet. So the only way to stop them is for people to stop using them. And that will put a crimp on there. I think in the next, by 2025, they expect to increase making virgin plastics by 33%. And eventually they'll double. And we already have too much plastic on the planet right now. So just imagine what, what that state of affairs is going to be. They have no concept of anything other than profit. So that's why we're left to, to do it ourselves. Sorry.
Off on that one a little.
And, and Steve, I'm looking at your picture on, on my screen. They do make very sturdy paper straws that are big, round and have a crimp. And they can replace plastic easily, honestly. It's not those little skinny ones that you're used to.
Cocktail drinks, you mean, come on, just kidding, just kidding. Yeah, Lisa, you are raising your hand.
Thanks. Um, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think at this point, I'm really supportive of engaging with Dr. Fowler and the class to update the survey and to include some updated things like we're discussing tonight. The straws, I don't know if that was included before and what options there could be for that. And, you know, I think that to me, it just makes a lot of sense to do that since she's done it before. She's agreeing to do it again. She's got the same class. She's got the, the mechanisms in place and now we have these model ordinances. Um, and the previous one we had, this new one we have to go along with that. So I think to me, it makes a lot of sense to engage with the class and see what they come back with so that when we do put something forward, it's the best it can be and doesn't, you know, negatively impact any, you know, users or businesses. And to me, this makes a lot of sense, but, um, so I just wanted to say that's where what I'm supporting at this point. So I just.
Thanks, Lisa. Dave, quick question about that. I remember, sorry Patty, just let me grab this question. Um, I remember the last time that that was the thing, that it was with the Sustainable Communities Consortium or whatever that is. Um, and we were supposed to be billed for it, but then we weren't billed for it. And it's, you know, like, I think theoretically, we're supposed to pay for that as a service. Did you and Laura talk about that at all?
We did a little bit. And so, um, you're right, the, 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 this is kind of, um, we, a project that would use the Sustainable Communities Collaborative as kind of its vessel to advance through the, you know, the process and there would be typically a fee associated with that. I don't know what that is. Dr. Fowler was going to reach out to Alona Ballrich, who is, um, kind of managing that program now uh, along with, I think, Michelle Hausele and, and determine, you know, kind of what the specifics would look like. But you're right, the, the last project that we engaged, uh, the College of Law for, the last time they, they went through this exercise, they just took it as a class project and the township didn't have any obligations to them. And, and that was it. So, you know, it's possible that would be the case this year, but our next year rather, if we pursued it, since it's the same course, but we would have to have that discussion with, uh, the Sustainability Institute and determine whether they would charge a fee for that service.
Part of the reason why I'm asking is because of course I'm curious as to how much it would cost us, but the other reason, and sorry Patty, I haven't forgotten you. The other reason is because when I was looking for that information from Laura Fowler, the only thing I could find was like, uh, I would call it like an executive summary, not like the whole report. And like I, from what I gleaned of that, again, not the whole report, but that was that they were not, they would not be giving us new information if they repeated that. The information would not, it would not be information. It wouldn't add anything. So if we were going to go in that direction, I would want it to actually add something because there's a cost involved, not just financially, but of time. So if it's smart, I would go into that camp and say, yeah, that makes sense. It's, it's inexpensive. It's going to get us new information that's valuable. But that is not currently what I'm seeing. But again, that's just based on that one very brief document. So I wouldn't be quite ready to move ahead with saying direct staff to do that. I'd be wanting to get the more information from Dr. Fowler about actual financial cost. And then what would be And then what would be new information? And I acknowledge that part of some hesitation might be somewhat related to the pandemic. So it would be like, yeah, we're having a same exact data, but a different time snapshot. And I realized that theoretically could be, that theoretically could be helpful. But I just know that other municipalities that are far larger than us, and I think even a whole state implemented a plastic bag law during the pandemic. So again, taking that information and integrating it at like Philadelphia, I mean, during the pandemic. So if they could do it, again, looking at what Laura, Dr. Fowler has to offer, is it really going to be that helpful? Okay, so I'll just stop that comment. Patty, you were waiting so patiently. Um, did I talk it right out of your, your head? I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. It's
Okay, good.
Good to hear that. So, um, yeah, I don't know exactly how I feel about engaging the class. I don't, I don't disagree with it. I think it sounds like a good idea, but then as Laura said, there might be complicating things about it. But, um, as for the, um, the, the ordinance itself, I agree with Pam. Um, when we lived before in Maryland, this was, um, it wasn't necessarily the ban, but the, the fee went into effect and, and people actually changed remarkably well. It, I do one hundred percent agree that we need to stop bringing more plastic into the, into, just into production, et cetera. And so I would encourage including straws in this as well, like I, I disagree with what Steve was saying. So I am in favor of the ordinance, but I think maybe a longer period of time before, um, the ban, fee to ban, I would maybe think a year. Just to help, but I think in terms of the region, uh, it, people catch on pretty quickly and um, it's actually easier having your own bags. But that's just my personal experience because I've been using my own bags for like ten years. So.
Thanks Patty, thanks.
And I believe that, that, that's consistent with what we heard from Dr. Fowler in that executive summary. And there is some raw data that she needs to compile and send back me. Part of it, she was out on sabbatical and then the pandemic happened. So she did apologize that she wasn't able to provide anything more than that kind of abbreviated summary as soon as I get that. I'll share that out with the board. It's two things. And I think, uh, Ms. Stevens, I think you hit it on the head with the, the impact fee. Um, I think in other communities has been very effective, even if it's a small amount. It's enough to deter, uh, some people from bringing their own plastic bags. I think the board really needs to consider, you know, do you want to move forward with an ordinance without having re-engaged the businesses? Whether you do that through, uh, the College of Law or some other avenue. And secondly, which we haven't even really talked about is who is going to enforce this? Uh, I, I mean, I think that's a big question in and of itself that really has to have a, a, a lot of concerted strategy involved because it, you know, the police department won't enforce something that's not, that's not like, that's not.
No, 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 definitely not.
Our time ordinance officer who's basically kept pretty busy with, you know, with his, uh, his day to day already. So I really just want to caution the board on rushing too quickly into a ban or any kind of regulation that there's an expectation that staff enforces when we don't have the capacity to do that. Just a, another word of admonishment as we proceed.
Good word. Okay, so I'm going to give, I'm going to give a go here at, uh, seeing what we have some, some consensus on. So I'm not calling for a motion yet because I don't think we really have consensus on a path forward. But let me try to put this into words and see if we can get to one. I also, I appreciate what Steve is saying about straws. And I also, uh, think that, in fact, the Penn State invent folks, in fact, are doing a paper straw project. Where they're already, I think, in production. So it's an actual company. So we can even support a locally cultivated company. I don't think they're local anymore. So that, that definitely, there's a lot of innovation happening on that. I think, yes, they used to fall apart quite a bit. Now they've come quite a, quite a ways. Um, sensitive to that issue. I myself had a sister with special needs, worked with a lot of folks with special needs, totally get that. Um, but I think it can be addressed. So where I'm going with that is I think that we have a three-two consensus that if we were to move forward with the ordinance, which I think we have consensus to move forward with something, that we would be at least initially, including straws, three-two. That's, and if, if anybody has disagreement, let me know. I think that, uh, I, I feel like we're all still, at least, well, okay, I'll speak for myself. I'm still a little bit on the fence about the entire ban. But I'm not so on the fence that I don't want to consider it at all. So, um, if we have a three-two or even a five-zero to move forward with, considering either or both pathways, we could do that with the knowledge it's uncertain. The engaging of the Sustainability Institute, I think there is some thought that it, it could be beneficial and then some questions of is it worth the time and perhaps money to move forward if we're not getting new information? Um, I'm not opposed. I'm trying to figure out how we can get that information so we can make that decision in a more informed way. Um, with also out, with, with, without delaying things too much either, at least getting that information. So like if Dave could re-engage with Dr. Fowler and talk about the cost, the timing, and whether it, like her, like the way she approaches things is so different than the way I approach things. Like, is there any space for any new information? So could we maybe ask Dave? Can there be, would there be new information? How many dollars would it cost? And what would the timing be? And most importantly, can we get that report from last time? Because like, you know, the executive summary was really helpful, but it might be even more helpful to see dig down. Because I don't think that any of us would be opposed to asking Dr. Fowler those things. So I'm just trying to find some common ground here.
He is compiling that data and she's going to send that to me when it's complete. So I will have that. I don't know what timeframe, but I'll have that for you as soon as it's done.
I was going to ask if you think it would be before the end of their semester.
Uh, well, it's, this is a kind of cleanup work. It's not the same class. So she's putting it together now. The class that did the research has moved on and so.
Her semester. I like, it, do you think, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just talking like the professors talk, like, December thirteenth is right around the end of their semester. Do you think that that, that, that she would have that report to us before then?
I can ask.
Okay. That last report. If anybody feels inclined to make any motion, I mean, I'm not stopping you from doing that. I don't think I got us very far from do our little synopsis.
I mean, is there? So you're looking for a motion for staff to authorize this ordinance that's attached in here?
Well, I would say, um, yeah, that's a good point. Are we even ready to authorize advertisement if we have lingering questions? Probably not. So probably not this motion.
I'm just asking because that was the recommended motion. I just feel like we need more discussion. I mean, I think the enforcement question is really big. I just think we need at least one more, if not two discussions before we even see it, you know, and a cleaned up draft ordinance.
I think that's probably, that's probably fair. Um, Dave, do you think that you could get that information from Dr. Fowler? And maybe do a wee bit of research on enforcement of other municipalities in Pennsylvania? Like how they handle their enforcement? Um, and then could we maybe talk about this again at the next available agenda? Who's, who's, who thinks that sounds like a good idea? Anybody? Bueller? Lisa? Patty? Steve? Steve got it. All right. Okay, so next time we can have it on the agenda where we have the information, that'd be great. Talking to Dr. Fowler about what we mentioned, figuring out enforcement or getting a lead on enforcement. Any other outstanding questions? Pam?
Um, I just wanted to say one thing. I, I wouldn't be in favor of doing the study again because that means waiting almost another year before we would even get to the ordinance. And when I see the mess that we're in right now, I, I think it's urgent that we act sooner than that. My spring semester twenty twenty-two isn't going to be done until May. So by the time something would happen from May, it would probably be the end of twenty twenty-two by the time it, it got through. And that's a really, that's a long time, especially since it's been four years that and I've been working, already working on this. And I mean, you know, we were, we were that close to the, to getting in ordinance together when the ban on bans came. So it's getting kind of frustrating for me with the kicking the can down the road thing.
Respectfully, I, I do understand. I would just add that it, it's, if, if this is something the board really wants to be invested in, that you do the process right, otherwise an ordinance can be just as easily repealed by another board. If, if they feel like you haven't listened to the business community, taken an opportunity to engage uh, with your constituents and understand what they're doing right now, what their concerns are about this. So you have full information when you're considering an ordinance. It could be just as easily repealed and it sets you back even further than where you are right now. I mean, if you, I think your example of the last effort at this was a good one. I mean, we, we advanced a, a, a draft ordinance quickly and the outcome was a ban on bans for a year. In direct response, basically to Ferguson Township's actions. So I, I, I appreciate it. I'll do whatever.
Wait, wait, but you have to explain why, Dave.
Well, because as a result of essentially Ferguson Township's consideration of this ordinance, there was a budget amendment or a, a budget earmark, maybe more appropriate, that imposed this moratorium by the, the legislator that represents Ferguson Township. So.
Of Hilex Poly, that's.
The, the reaction is more, sometimes more, is sometimes more, has, has more fire to it than the, than the initial attempt. So.
Well, that was.
In that case.
So we're, I think what we're deciding here is that we are moving forward in a cautious manner. We are moving forward in a cautious manner, but we are continuing to move forward. Um, I wanted to hit Patty, you had your hand up. Just wanted to make sure I got that comment on, in, yes.
No, I was just going to say that, um, I appreciate where you're coming from Pam, but I do agree, maybe even part of the, um, the study that the students can do is asking the business community their feeling about the fee versus, um, fee to ban. I mean, that might even be useful information, but.
Well, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the whole study, actually.
Yeah, so that's definitely on the list. So, um, before the next time it's on the, well, okay. How do I want to phrase that? Dave's going to get information for us about when that, that, um, study is going to be available from Dr. Fowler. We've asked staff to go ahead and put a discussion on the next available agenda after they get some information about other municipalities enforcement. And talk to Dr. Fowler about just her timing, like she doesn't have to have all the answers, timing and, um, cost, and will, will there be an opportunity for new information? Did I forget anything? I don't want to have, I don't want to go around in another circle. Patty, what did I forget?
No, no, you didn't forget anything, but I also think it gives time too for us to get some discussion with Patton and the borough and get them involved in this process and.
Good point, good point. Let's, let's get them to get that, that resolution there on their agenda. So we can all see how we're rowing in the same direction. And I think we might be ready to move on from this. Unless I forgot a detail. Going once. Going twice. Okay, we are moving on to the award of contract twenty twenty-one dash C fifteen, street tree pruning, introduced by Dave Modricar. Welcome to the late show, Dave Modricar.
Yeah, good evening. I've been here the whole time.
Oh, bless you.
Listening. And, uh, so now I'll talk for a few minutes and see what you have to say about, uh, a street tree pruning contract. So bids were open publicly for our street tree pruning contract twenty twenty-one C fifteen. Couple of us were present. The contract was advertised in the Center Daily Times, distributed to interested bidders. And in this case, there were five contractors that held a copy of the, the plans and specs. Two bids were received, cutting edge tree professionals, one hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, denture and denture tree surgeons, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. Work includes trimming about nine hundred seventy street trees in Sabbrook, Chestnut Ridge Manor, Fox Point, the landings, Shamrock Estates and a section of Blue Course Drive. Budget for the work is, uh, forty-eight thousand. The fund balance, uh, exceeds the fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty. So what that means is there are sufficient funds to award the contract as its bid. I'm recommending that the Board of Supervisors award contract twenty twenty-one C fifteen street tree pruning to denture and denture tree surgeons in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty dollars.
Thank you, Dave. Let's entertain a motion.
Uh, this is Patty. I, uh, moved that the Board of Supervisors award contract twenty twenty-one C fifteen. Um, street tree printing to denture and denture tree surgeons in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Fantastic. Any dialogue on the matter? All right, um, seeing none? All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes unanimously. Um, I have a quick question for Dave Modricar. I'm so sorry it's late, but, okay, so I've been thinking a lot about the spotted lanternfly and our street trees. My question is, are those maple trees that are in the development, I think it's the hillside west side, it's the longest development name ever. Um, that, are those maple trees, street trees that we own? Or are they property owners' trees? Because there are so many maple trees. If somebody went through and just planted maples in that entire thing, um, are they ours or somebody else's? Do we know? Because they're not, there's no, there's no sidewalk, so you can't tell.
Yes, yeah, so I do know. And the, the short answer, and I can make it a longer one if you like, is in the way. Um, they are ours. Yeah, the entryway is ours. Uh, the further you go up into the development, they, they become private. So we, we.
Always something. Okay, all right. Very good. Sounds good. So we just might want to think about that, at least, you know, that neighborhood. If it's going to be anything like my daughter's neighborhood outside of Harrisburg area when they were hit, same issue, they had maples everywhere. And it was like Armageddon of spotted lanternfly. So we might want to start thinking about that. Thank you.
Yeah, it has been a subject of discussion with the Trade Commission.
Oh, good, 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 good. All right. Okay, thank you, Dave Modricar. And let us move on to staffing committee reports. First up is the COG Committee Reports Executive Committee. Um, you know, you've been to the general forum meeting and. Um, experienced the majority of our agenda. We do routinely work on. Uh, some other policy items for COG. Um, and so, for example, we're working on still ongoing. Um, the communication policy to external stakeholders. And uh, so you know, we did the new agenda item policy and we're figuring that out. So that was the, the rest of our meeting. We're just working on a few of those policies and uh, you can of course see them in draft form. In the executive committee agenda. Next up, oh, I'm sorry, any questions? All right, next up, other committee reports. Do we have any? Doesn't look like it. All right, staff reports, they are in your packet. I beat you to it, Dave. Um, Dave, do you have anything that you want to highlight?
No, just some information. Oh, I should note, one thing that's not in any of our reports. Today we had a new staff person start, Shelley Tamang. She is our new uh, township receptionist and planning and zoning administrative assistant. So next time you're in the office, feel free to say howdy. She is from Hawaii and she has not experienced a Pennsylvania winter and we're not going to tell her about what she can expect. So. But she's uh, she's a great hire and we're looking forward to bringing her up to speed and getting her started.
That's great. Welcome to her and many blessings for a mild winter for her initiation. Any questions for Dave, for his report or any of the? Lisa.
I don't really know whose report this goes under. I guess I had it for police and then I realized there was not a police report. So I'll just general report comment. Just thank you to the township and the police for the update on yesterday. Um, Sunday, that trick or treat was still on following the um. Robbery yesterday, so you know, um, senses were heightened. So it was just nice that the, um, I forget if. The township also made a post, but I know the police made a post, the trick or treating was still on. So that was appreciated. That was. Thoughtful and timely. Was that?
That was one of the few times that I've ever made a social media post on behalf of the township and it was because. There was nobody else available to do it, so.
That was great. That was really, really nice to see. Cause it, the messaging had been, you know, shocking and a little confusing and um, so to see that was very nice. Um, and then just thank you to the police for going around with the glow sticks. That's always, I think people really look forward to that. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say was um, in response to the recent bicycle car accident. On North Atherton, um, maybe. A week, 10 days ago, um, I've lost track, I think, uh, you know, where I'm talking about. So in response, when things like that happen, you know, it's devastating. And so I think it's just an appropriate time to look at those deficiencies, you know, in accommodations and um, access. Uh, for pedestrians and bicyclists, you know, obstacles to their safe movement. Um, obviously, there can be a lot of big, big items to discuss there, but. Certainly some small things too that can be an immediate response. Um, I was thinking about, so you know, however, we can work with. Trish Meeks at COG, um, as our bike planner. Um, you know, any, uh. I'm sure that the police and Trish have done different um, posts before, just about cycling safety and things like that. I know they have cycling safety courses. Um, but just, you know, more frequent reminders about uh, safe habits. And then I don't, I was curious if the township or if CRPA, I know that they do those bicycle meetups. You know, like free coffee for bicyclists sometimes. And I don't know if they hand things out at that time or if the township ever has, but you know, some type of distribution of some simple reflective. Items I think could really go a long way. Uh, you know, people don't attend classes that much to learn about safety, but they love free things. So if we can get some free, you know, just reflective things and reminders for people to wear. Walkers and bicyclists. I just think it's such an easy thing to do and you know, just makes us all remember. You know, conditions that, that are frequent here, rain, darkness, so.
Yeah, I can, I can pass that along to Sergeant Hendrick. I know he's always looking, he's got, he kind of manages our, our um, community tchotchke budget, I guess. And so, you know, maybe he's got something in mind, uh, like some simple reflective items that we can pick up on the cheap and distribute. You know, where the opportunities present themselves and it's a good idea.
Thank you. That would be great. You know, if there's something that needs to come up as we talk about the budget, you know, I think it's. That there are so many simple, cheap things that people can just throw on, um, you know, or stick on, so. Uh, yeah, that would be, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Good comments, Lisa. Definitely got my, my brain going and thinking a lot about that Northland area mobility study and. Looking at that again with this kind of, I guess, at least us as board members, kind of. Newfound focus of really focusing on the schools, the parks, that corridor there, trying to. Somehow improve a passage of safety for individuals in that area. So keep that in the forefront of our minds as we move into budgeting time and. Capital improvements and whatnot. Okay, any other questions for Dave? Okay, communications to the board. Think I've read all of mine. Um, and then you heard folks uh, talk about the park. I've been in communication with several folks about the. Um, Homestead Park play equipment. Others, any other communications? Okay. Uh, calendar items. Um, we've got our usual suspects and then can somebody remind us again? When is the winter market? It's not on here. Winter market for the engagement station.
Yeah, I want to say. November 6th from 12 PM to 6 PM.
Saturday, November 6th from 12 to 6. Can we also get some social media pinging? I'm sure you probably already have, but just. And undate people with that so we can get some good participation.
Absolutely. We um, yeah, we collaborate, we coordinated with NPR, local WPSU for them to, to promote. Um, during the morning edition, we were doing social media posts, but also connected with our local businesses to put up flyers and pass out business sized cards. So we are, we are out promoting and, and doing some social media posts as well.
Quick question about that sentries. Are you planning to have like a, a small, a short survey there at that engagement station or?
Well, so HRG is actually staffing the engagement station. So I'll be there a few hours. Um, and there, there might be staff, you know, showing up to provide support and assistance, um, but it is being staffed by HRG. But they, they have three specific activities that they're doing to engage those that stop by the debt or the engagement station. Uh, they're also keeping a tally of those that are giving um, feedback as well as the, you know, to, to keep track of. Input being provided by those who actually live in Ferguson Township. The project manager for HRG is, is tracking all of that. Uh, and then also the project manager will be um, discussing some other dates to host another public meeting. Here at the Township Building. So this was more of a preliminary effort to engage folks at an existing event, kind of meeting people where they're at. Uh, with the idea that we'll also host a public meeting here at Ferguson Township Main Meeting Room sometime in the future.
Thanks, sentries. And that's been this Saturday, right?
That is correct. Yeah, so the winter market at the Rivet is actually Saturday and Sunday, but Ferguson Township, our POS engagement station is Saturday. November 6th, 12 PM to 16.
Great, thank you so much. All right, and with that, we've come to our. Maybe favorite moment in the night.
Motion to adjourn.
Fantastic. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, feel better, Laura.
Thank you.